Good morning, everyone. Please be seated. First of all, my apologies to council and our community for being late to start. Unfortunately, June, unfortunately, June, I think, has a lot of last minute, last minute things that occur. They're usually the fruit of long hours of negotiation and conversation, and it comes to us, and we deal with them as quickly as we can because there is some urgency. And with that, that often leads to some rejigging of schedules. So I certainly appreciate your patience as we get started today. And I'll take my pen off my robe. So with that, I'd like to call the meeting to order. And I will move to our land acknowledgement, which I believe is up here somewhere. Right here. Okay, perfect. Thank you. And as we gather this morning, I would like to acknowledge on behalf of council and our community that we are meeting on the traditional territory of the Ogonkun people. We would like to thank the Ogonkun people and express our respect and support for their rich history, and we're extremely grateful for their many and continued displays of friendship. We also thank all the generations of people who have taken care of this land for thousands of years. So with that, we'd like to stand for a moment of silent reflection, and I'd like to note during this moment, please let us acknowledge, recognize, and remember our members of the military that were lost last week during a training exercise. Thank you both for your service, and our thoughts are with the families, their units, their friends, and the military at this time. Please be seated. And Mr. Kelly, could you conduct a roll call, please?
Thank you, Warden, and good morning. Counselor Bennett?
Present.
Counselor Bros?
Present.
Counselor Doncaster?
Here.
Counselor Donahue?
Here.
Warren Nemo?
Present.
Counselor Jardini?
Present.
Counselor Grills? Counselor Yon?
Here.
Counselor Lynch?
Here.
Counselor McKenzie?
Here.
Counselor Mayville?
Present.
Counselor Murphy?
Here.
Counselor Nicholson?
Here.
Counselor Service?
Here.
Counselor Watt?
Present.
Counselor Weir?
Here.
Counselor Wilmer?
Present.
You have Coram Warden.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Are there any disclosures of pecuniary interest in the general nature thereof? Seeing none, thank you. I would like a motion, please, of the adoption of the minutes of May 31, 2023. Counselor from, member from North Ogonkun Wilberforce, seconded by a member from Laurentian Hills. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? None is carried? Thank you. I've cemented Laurentian Hills in, so I shouldn't make a mistake for the rest of the day. Thank you. I'll turn to my address. Members of county council, during the month of June, I attended fourteen meetings on county business. On June 7, I attended with CEO Craig Kelly, Director Michael Nolan, to discuss paramedic issues, including cross-border billing, offload delays, and our relationship with the city of Ottawa. Members of county councils and staff from the counties of Prescott, Russell, Lanark, and Stormont, Dundas, and Glengarry, as well as the city of Cornwall, were present. We made progress on forging ahead with the issues. On June 8, I attended a meeting of CEO Craig Kelly, members of the Renfrew County District Health Unit Board, the mayor and CEO of South Ogonkun, and the mayor and staff from the city of Pembroke. This was an opportunity for our CDHU staff to brief us on the whole and the budget as a result of the possibility of the mitigation funding from the Proppin Fund Ontario not being renewed. The board noted the resulting strain on the 2024 budgets of the three obligated municipalities. We met again on June 19 with the same representation. We represented our concerns to MPP John Yakubuski in a briefing document regarding the absence of mitigation funding in 2024. He listened and appreciated our concerns and was interested in the financial penalty as a result for the three obligated municipalities. MPP Yakubuski agreed to seek clarification from the minister and to facilitate a meeting. On June 9, I attended the Roma Board Meeting virtually, an exciting meeting with lots of information and some challenging discussions. On June 12, I attended a meeting of the AMO, which is the Association of Municipalities of Ontario Economic Development and Municipal Task Finance Task Force. On June 22, I attended with many others from our municipal community a briefing on wildfires in Ontario hosted by the Ministry of Natural Resources and Forestry. In short, the prognosis was a long, dry summer with a high fuel load, and the probability of more fires if our communities are not vigilant. Some takeaways which should cause us to be watchful, if local municipalities write fire bans or bylaws or regulations, et cetera, must meet or exceed the provincial regulations. They noted the danger of fireworks debris but did not address the issue directly. And signage and information displayed posted produced by municipalities must be accurate and must be current. So all three points raised some flags for me. It seemed to emphasize municipal liabilities, which they were defining for us. On June 22 and 23, I was unable to attend in person the AMO Committee of the whole and AMO Board Meetings. I was able to inject my comments in the meeting through the members of the county and rural caucus after reviewing the information. Topics of discussion were Public Sector Broadband Network Innovation Alliance, reports from Technical Working Group on municipal insurance costs, coverage and liability issues, Bill 102, Strengthening Safety and Modernizing Justice Act 2023, update on advocacy on ending homelessness, and consultation on underground infrastructure locates. So I will send you a report during the summer. I'm just waiting for some of the notes from folks that did attend the meeting. June 22, I attended the FCS Annual General Meeting to bring remarks on behalf. And at the meeting, I noted they're working very closely with the Ogonkuns and P'waknag on First Nation. And I noted that in 1987, FCS had started a program where they hired an indigenous worker to work with our First Nations community. Before reconciliation, nobody knew how to spell it. They didn't know what it meant. And so, you know, I congratulated them on their foresight, to the point now where some of our First Nations have set up their own child protection divisions within association with FCS. So, you know, it was nice to see that and to offer them comment on it. And I spoke to them about their inclusiveness as well, and their work in protecting and helping their clients who were transgender, or queer, or gay, and whatever they wanted to do to define themselves and feel comfortable. So it was a very good meeting. So on June 26, I attended an interesting meeting with Warden Jane Toller from Pontiac County. She'll be in touch in the future, and the county of Renfrew will assist her in getting some information out once she has it organized. On June 26, I attended a meeting of the United Way Eastern Ontario Cabinet to discuss youth mental health and substance use health in East Ontario. On June 27, which was yesterday, I attended Roseburg Forest Products along with CEO Craig Kelly and County of Renfrew Economic Development staff at the invitation of Anita Vandenberg, the parliamentary secretary, I'm sorry, to the Minister of International Development, the Honorable Grayden Smith, Minister of Natural Resources and Forestry, and MPP John Yakubuski for an announcement on a significant funding investment. The announcement saw the federal and provincial governments invest 1.5 million each to help Roseburg Forest Products upgrade equipment at their Laurentian Valley facility. This investment will increase productivity by 60%, boost the company's molding revenues by 40%, and retrain eighteen workers for higher-paying, higher-scale roles, such as robotics, control operators, and add two new hires. Roseburg Forest Products is investing over 6.2 million in the project, which will see a robotic stacking, packing, and labeling station installed on each of its molding production lines. Roseburg noted automating their stacking and packing processes with robotics, sorry, has allowed them to expand from three shifts to four while creating a safer, more efficient, and more modern work environment for their team members. Roseburg provides the region with over 190 jobs, and it should be noted that the forest sector generated 20.9 billion in revenue from the sale of manufactured goods and services in 2021, and has supported more than 142,000 direct and indirect jobs in 2022. Also, yesterday, I attended alongside Counselor Donahue, CEO Craig Kelly, and Director of Long-Term Care Mike Blackmore, a meeting with the accreditation surveyors part of the protocols toward accreditation of our long-term care homes. And I must add, it was a very, it was a very pleasant meeting for us because, you know, we have two great facilities, and it was recognized, some of the strengths and excellence that we, that we as a corporation through governance, but also the two homes have been able to provide to the communities, which are our homes. So it was a very, it was a very great, a very good meeting. Later today, I'll be providing an update on the Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus and Eastern Ontario Regional Network to the local municipalities in the county of Lennox and Addington. On June 29, I'll be presenting the Culture Connector Awards to Ro Nwuz and Michelle Beal at the Union 108 Yoga and Lifestyle Studio in Armbray. Culture Connect is organized by the local immigration partnership of Lanark and Renfrew as an initiative, which offers a unique opportunity to celebrate the beauty of diversity and significance of culture. By bringing together community groups and organizations from across the Ottawa Valley, Culture Connect aims to create an inclusive space for learning, social connection, and fun. This month, Culture Connect was an opportunity to connect different cultures and explore new aspects of the Ottawa Valley. I will remind those assembled here of the following: The county of Renfrew, experience our history, share our future. This concludes my address for this session of county council. And I'd like to move to delegation, so I'm assuming that Mr. Perkins will introduce our first delegation.
Yes, thank you, Warden, and through you to county council. A great pleasure today to introduce Mr. Darren Waters, professional engineer, area manager, highway engineering, project delivery, and Ryan Vanderberg, project manager, project delivery, from Ministry of Transportation in Kingston. And they have a short presentation, and hopefully it'll entertain some questions for us. Thank you, gentlemen.
I must add that Darren is not a stranger to these chambers. Before COVID, he's made many trips, so thank you, and it's great to see you again.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you. Thank you, Lee. Thank you, Warden. Thank you, council, for inviting us to speak to you again today. And yes, it's many enjoyable presentations here at county council, and I'm glad to be here in person again. Thank you. So Ryan and I are going to make the presentation today. I will present at the beginning, as I have typically done, provide an overview of the work that we're completing on provincial highways throughout Renfrew County, not only this year, but within the next five years or so. I know that there's two projects of great significance to yourselves and your member municipalities. So our project on Highway 148 from Pembroke out to Greenwood Road, I'll provide a little bit of an update on that, and also a recent project where we started a preliminary design for intersection improvements at Highway 60 and County Road 3070, or Golden Lake, Lake Dory Road, sorry, and Coquemish Road. At that point, I'll be concluded my remarks, and I'll pass it over to Ryan. Ryan's my project manager who is working on the Highway 1720 project from Shield Drive up to Brew Street, I guess it is, three kilometers past Brew Street. So he'll provide an update on the progress we've made to date on that. So if I could advance to the next slide. So as we've done in the past, we've identified the work that we're doing in the county over this construction season. This year, we have an allocated investment of roughly $8 million on highway projects within Renfrew County. Perhaps that's a little lower than other years, but we do, we have obviously made significant investments in the county over the past few years. Basically, highway rehabilitation projects, they're really keeping our roads in state-of-good repair, for the most part. One of our focuses has been replacing small drainage culverts. Obviously, the integrity of the road depends on the infrastructure underneath it, and we have focused on those small drainage culverts as an area of concern for us because a lot of them were installed, you know, 1970-ish, so they're getting to the state where they need to be addressed. So we have sent out a number of standalone culvert replacement projects over the years. And obviously, standard pavement resurfacing, what we call structural culvert replacements. So those are culverts that are over 10 feet in length, so three meters in length. They're classified as structural culverts, and they're actually designed as bridges. So those projects are done separately from the smaller culverts, and then also bridge repairs. If I could move on to the next slide. So just an overview of the projects that we have underway in 2023. I will start and head Claire and Mariah. We have a large culvert program up there that's been underway for a couple of years. I believe that they're more or less finished, but there were a few expenditures this year, and that was addressing culvert replacements from Chalk River to Nipissing District, so a little bit, obviously, in Laurentian Hills as well. Moving down Highway 17, we do have a resurfacing project from Greenwood Road to Whitewater Road, and that project is, we focused on some culvert replacements last year, but it's mostly the pavement resurfacing this year, and I think it's underway as we speak, and should be completed this year. Just outside Cobden, near the Forsters Falls Road intersection, we have a structural culvert, which we will be replacing. That one hasn't gone out to tender yet. We're at the stage where we're just about completed the design. Of interest in that is because where the culvert is located in relation to the intersection with Forsters Falls Road, we do have to temporarily relocate that intersection to the east in order to complete the work. So we will be, if we get the tender out in time this year, you should expect to see some of the grading work for the temporary intersection work to move that, move the county road over to the east a little bit. And in order to facilitate construction, we are going to be installing traffic signals there, temporary traffic signals, just for the period of construction. So again, once the, once the work is completed in a couple of years from now, it will take a couple of years, the plan will be to, you know, remove that detour and remove those traffic signals and put it back to a stop-controlled intersection. Moving further down Highway 417, there is, most of the work is in the city of Ottawa, but we have some culvert replacements on 417 from Highway 7 up to Shield Drive. That work is completing this year. Of significance, of course, is the Calabogie Road interchange work that we have been working on, and Ryan will provide a bit of a more, bit of a broader update on that. That's obviously the first phase of the Highway 17 expansion that we're underway with from Shield Drive up to Brew Street. But, I mean, Ryan and I are going to stop in and take a look at the construction later today, but obviously, the bridge is well underway. Construction is planned to be completed by the end of this year. And at the end of it, there will be intersection connections with Highway 17, but it's basically the interchange will be there and in place to support the future twinning. We also have on Highway 41, we're continuing with some hot-in-place recycling resurfacing from Griffith to Eganville. And just recently awarded is the Snake Creek Bridge rehabilitation on Highway 28. In that case, that's the first rehabilitation for that bridge. I believe it was built in the late 1970s. So we are undertaking barrier wall replacements, concrete deck repairs, and basically localized repairs to the bridge underneath. I'll move on to the next slide, please. Thank you. So future, future projects that we have underway in various stages of design, and these projects could be programmed anywhere from next year to the next five years out. Obviously, when we do undertake design work, we have many things to consider, such as, you know, actually completing the engineering design, but undertaking the environmental assessments and determining whether there's any impacts to the environment and mitigation, et cetera. That typically takes us a couple of years to get through, so, and then obviously making sure we have the final budget. So any of these projects can be anywhere from next year to the next five years. We do have, from Rolfton to Brent Road, we are continuing. So there are some more challenging culverts that we haven't tackled that require some more detailed design. They're typically deeper in nature, so we broke those out of that project that's finishing up this year. So there will be some more culvert replacements up on Highway 17 as we move forward. Harvey Creek to Stone Cliff, pavement resurfacing, that's planned, hopefully within the next year. year or so. And as we move forward, obviously, with that, it continues to keep Highway 17 in good condition. I'll get into a bit more detail in some further slides, but Highway 148 from the Pembroke City Limit to Greenwood Road, we continue to work at the detailed design to, to improve that section of road. Highway 17, a fairly long stretch of resurfacing from Greenwood Road to Storyland Road, probably will be done in a couple of separate projects, but again, maintaining Highway 17 in good service condition. Renfrew to Douglas on Highway 60, again, resurfacing there. We have a structural culvert that we're working on just north of Apiongo Road on Highway 41, and that'll be a standalone project just to replace a, a larger three-meter culvert. I'll, I'll provide a bit more detail on our preliminary design underway at Highway 60 and Lake Dory Road in Golden Lake. And also, we have culvert replacements and pavement resurfacing on Highway 60 from Willno over to the Nipissing District Boundary. Move on to the next slide. So as I indicated, we, we have been working for a number of years on Highway 148 to try and obviously improve the intersection and operational improvement of that section of road. The project itself remains in detailed design, and we are nearing the end of that detailed design phase. It includes also some pedestrian and cycling improvements and obviously some drainage improvements. There is a project website, which I'm sure the municipality is aware of, and you are as well, so further details can be found there. We did have a, our final public information center was in the fall, so we're working towards completion of the detailed design and publishing of the Design and Construction Report later this year. I'll move on to the next slide, please. So just a, just a reminder that we've broken that section of road into two sections, from the city of Pembroke Limits out to Drive-In Road or County Road 29. We are widening the highway. It's currently a two-lane highway with, with some, some left-turn lanes, so, so that section of road will be widened continuously to include a center-left turn lane to, to allow for access to in and out of businesses. The intersection with Drive-In Road will obtain or will get traffic signals at the end of the, at the end of construction. And we are working with Laurentian Valley and the city of Pembroke to work on agreements to, to get sidewalk in place, because sidewalk isn't a ministry installation, it's a municipal installation. So we're working on those final agreements for that. Next slide, please. So, and the remainder of that section of road, then, between County Road 29 and County Road 40, it's, it's maintaining the rural two-lane nature of that section of road. We are pavement, rehabilitating the pavement. We're adding two-and-a-half meter paved shoulders, and that was to assist in accommodating some of the cycling that occurs out there. And there are some minor modifications to the County Road 40 intersection to change the, the ramp coming from Quebec to, to Pembroke to improve the operation of that ramp. And we're adding a slip-around at Old Mill Road. And that's to allow for left-turning vehicles to pass through there. So before I move on to the next slide there, just a little bit of an update. So as I mentioned, we're working with our service provider, Parsons, to complete that final design. We did get, we had a little bit of a curveball in the, in the, in the winter in that, as you can appreciate, there's many, many utilities out there in that corridor. One of the challenges that we had was the hydro utilities on the corridor being on both sides of the road, owned by two different hydro companies. On the one side, the hydro company that we were working with to try and get the utilities relocated with, had decided that they no longer were interested in owning that infrastructure, so we had to go back to the drawing board and renegotiate with, I guess it was Hydro One that finally assumed ownership of that utility. And that did delay us a little bit because we had planned to have those utilities all moved by now and be able to be in a position to, to tender the project. So, so we are, we are delayed a little bit from what we wanted to. Some other challenges that we found through design is with working through some of the installation of some of the deep utilities, being able to maintain access to the properties and keep traffic going has been a bit of a challenge, so we've gone back and we've updated our design a little bit as a result of that. So we're still working through those items, and we hope to be completed design later this year. One of the things, obviously, we know there's a major concern to see the intersection of Drive-In Road receive traffic signals. So we have hired a separate service provider to look at, is it possible to get the signals installed before the main construction? And we hired a separate service provider because we did not want to slow down our, our Parsons. Parsons is working on us, on the main contract. And we also wanted to make sure that, you know, there was a different view of the situation to see if there's something else we could do. We just, we're just in the process of finalizing things with that service provider to see if it is possible, and hopefully, within the next few weeks, we'll be able to get back to on that. I'm sorry, Warden, I may be taking a little bit longer than I need to, but.
No, it's important. The questions on 148 have been, have been mounting, so that, that's a, that's a great overview. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The last one that I wanted to provide an overview on before I move on to Ryan is, is our intersection improvements at Highway 60 and County Road 30 slash 70. I know this has been a concern for the local municipality and yourselves, obviously, for quite a while, and we have moved forward, obviously, with that preliminary design. I'm pleased to report that we did have our first public information center last week, and we had an excellent turnout. I believe it was roughly 25 or so people show up at the, at the in-person public information center, which again, I must say, for a project like that that may have significant impacts to the community of Golden Lake, we are very happy to be able to meet in person and discuss with people that may be impacted by that project. One of the things, obviously, the intersection as it stands, it does, it has gotten to the point where it warrants traffic control. And we do get asked a lot of times, why can't you just throw, you know, a set of traffic signals in at the existing intersection? When we looked at it, the skew of the intersection is such that it's just, it, it doesn't operate properly if you try to put the, the signals in. What we do do is we add left-turn lanes when we add signals in on Highway 60. That, obviously, with anyone who's familiar with the community of Golden Lake, the, the community, the, the houses and the gas station, everything so close to the road there, to be able to widen and add those left-turn lanes in is very difficult. But then when you do add those left-turn lanes in, you still have traffic because of the way the skew of the intersection is, and, and my next, maybe I'll slip to my next slide, it actually demonstrates, you know, when you have two sort of design vehicles, which are your larger trucks, if they both wanted to turn left at the same time, they basically collide in the middle of the intersection, the way that it's set up. So you're looking at, some way you have to move the intersection legs around to be able to make it operate properly. And that's what, if anyone who did attend that PIC or has looked at our, our project website, which there is a link to it there, we're looking at many different options, and one of them is to actually move the south leg of the intersection off to the west, to the other side of the gas station, to avoid that situation. That's just a quick overview of that. So what I'll do now, Warden, if it's okay, I'll pass it to Ryan, or would you like to?
Well, that's fine, and then we'll, we'll collect questions at the end.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Good morning, everyone. My name's Ryan Vandenberg. I'm the project manager on the Highway 17 Twinning Project. The quick summary of the project, it's 22 and a half kilometers of twinning, starting from Shield Drive, moving westerly to three kilometers past Brew Street. As you likely know, the Calabogie 508 interchange is currently being constructed right now as an interim interchange, and we have plans to construct three other interchanges at, one at County Road 6, one at O'Brien, and one at Brew Street. And we'll also be constructing a new structure at the Bonnashere River. So, next slide. So just a quick background here. Our preliminary design was done back in 2005. From that, there's been two phases already completed. The first one was from Landarc Road 29 to Division Street, so about five and a half kilometers, and the second one from Division Street to Shield Drive, about another five and a half kilometers. So as you note, our next plans to twin 22 and a half kilometers, it's about four times the length in one single project. So we do have the interim interchange going in at Calabogie in advance of the, the twinning, and that will ultimately form, to be combined with the twinning when the time comes and under its ultimate interim, interchange configuration. Next slide. So right now, the interim interchange is designed to carry Calabogie 508 traffic over Highway 17. So we'll be doing local road connections, the realignments, and any ramp connections that are necessary. So this is really done to improve the operational safety in advance of the twinning. So there'll be an ultimate interchange configuration that'll be done with the Highway 17 expansion. And as Darren noted earlier, the construction's expected to be completed later this year, in 2023. Next slide. So as part of the twinning, we identified as well that, from an operational perspective, that we need a new maintenance petroliard. The current space is leased from the township of McNab and Brayside, and we need a new facility to support the twinning as well when the twinning comes from Armpryor to Renfrew. So as part of that, we did hire a separate service provider to do a site selection process and preliminary design. They had shortlisted it down to four locations at interchange locations, essentially. From that process, we had come up with the technically preferred alternative. Next slide. The technically preferred alternative, and this fits between the existing maintenance petroliard facilities as well, from an operational perspective, the technically preferred location is at the County Road 29 location, just inside the city of Ottawa Limits. So our preliminary design is just wrapping up, and we'll be starting our detailed design, and that'll be then followed by construction. So this will be planned to be in service for the twinning of Highway 17. Next slide. So we did want to thank all of the municipalities for their ongoing collaboration here. I think we have about 16 different items that we're working on with, with the County of Renfrew, the Town of Renfrew, the Township of McNab-Brayside, and Horton Township as well. The County of Renfrew and Horton Township both shared concerns about the trail crossings and the staging impacts during construction, so that's something that we're working on with our service provider to mitigate those. The Town of Renfrew, we have ongoing talks about realigning Winton Road in advance of the twinning, and the Town of Renfrew has expressed interest in completing that work, and we're negotiating those items right now. And the Township McNab-Brayside, there's the Goshen Road Bridge Construction, and we're discussing how the detour plans will have to occur while the, the bridge is being constructed there. Next slide. So the current schedule. So given the fact that this is four times the length of a typical expansion job, we do have several pre-engineering works underway right now, things like geotechnical and foundations engineering. We have ongoing consultation with our indigenous communities. We are essentially finalizing a reference concept design here. There's a significant environmental component to this as well, and we are advancing all of our environmental permits behind the scenes there and acquiring what property we need to along the corridor. So procurement of the, the design and construction team will occur after the appropriate time and when the pre-engineering works have been advanced sufficiently. So the start of constructions will be determined based off of those requirements of when the design and construction team is hired.
Thank you very much. And with that, I'll open the floor to questions. Counselor from Adamston Bromley, and then Counselor from Armpryor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Warden, and thank you to both gentlemen, to Mr. Waters. I think perhaps you can confirm this, Warden. I think Mr. Waters' loyalty points can be redeemed on merchandise from the Ontario Winter Games. I think there is still a selection available. Thank you very much. Two questions. One is with respect to the hot-in-place. Is that, is that now part of the, the current and regular program that the MTO is doing, or is this still in a, in a kind of proof of concept? What kind of durability this has? Perhaps you could address that, Mr. Waters?
Yes. Our geotechnical section is the expert on our pavement selection strategies, but they have indicated that we have used hot-in-place recycling, I believe, in a couple of contracts up in northwestern region already, over the last couple of years. And we have the one on Highway 41 here, and we just awarded a contract on Highway 7 between, well, either side of Perth. So that's underway again this year. And yeah, well, I think, as we all know, the budgets have become very stretched over the last couple of years with inflation, inflation of construction pricing, et cetera. The key with the hot-in-place recycling, obviously, is you can renew an asset that you already have, and it does lower the initial cost of construction quite substantially. So we are actively pursuing them at locations where we believe it will work. Now, there is significant pre-engineering testing that needs to be done to make sure that the existing asphalt can actually handle it. So it's not obviously something we can apply everywhere, but it is something that we're considering to try and manage our constrained budgets.
A supplementary?
Thank you. And the, the second question was to, is to Mr. Vandenberg, and I much appreciate the update as well. So I guess the, for me, the key slide, this is on with respect to the schedule for Highway 17, and it was the bottom bullet point seems to be the fulcrum, in my estimation, so start of construction will be determined when the design and construction team is hired. So I think that begs the question is, when do we anticipate that the design and construction team might be hired? Because if I'm understanding, the McLean Interchange was Phase 1, and the 22 and a half kilometers are Phase 2, but you also identified that to get to west of Brew Street, there are also three more structures. So presumably, those three structures are also, excuse me, in Phase 2. So it seems that there is a very large project going forward, and that we are nearing completion, and the estimation is that this will be completed at the McLean Drive in 2023, is when the next phase is like, is this part of the five-year plan right now?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Warden. So yes, obviously, we, we know that this is a question of concern, and one of the things that we have been working very hard at behind the scenes, as Ryan alluded to, is generally de-risking the project to make sure that it's at the point where it'll be ready to go out for design and construction teams to bid it appropriately. So as Ryan stated, one of the, one of the major things we've identified is environmental impacts, and that's something that we're working very hard at identifying what those environmental impacts are of this large project through many, many acres of, of, you know, swamps and forests and et cetera, where there are many species at risk that are located. We anticipate that that process of getting environmental permitting is still a number of months away, and we don't know exactly when that is going to be concluded. So that is one of our major items that we're working through at this point in time. So unfortunately, I can't give you an exact date, but I can tell you that we're working very hard to, to move that through the process. Is there anything you wanted to add to that, Ryan? No.
Thank you. And the member from Armpryor, and then Laurentian Valley.
Thank you, Warden. Thank you for the presentation. My question was with the construction yard being in the city of Ottawa, when you're, most of what we're talking about is the County of Renfrew. I know there's probably an answer, but I'm curious why.
Yes. When we get into looking at the operational performance of the adjacent yards, so there's also, we have an area maintenance contractor out here that operates in Ottawa and at Hayley Station as well, so they're looking at the different routes that they have to go. This is mostly winter operations, right? So snowplows, so when they're going from one location to another. So this is strategically placed as well, kind of between the other two locations. So, yeah.
So just from my memory, so they operated at Hayley Stations and then Terry Fox. Is, is there an operation at Terry Fox, I believe? Yeah, okay. Thanks. And so this is midway between the two? Okay, now I understand. Thank you. And we'll move to Laurentian Valley, please.
Thank you for the presentation. Very interesting. One point, I guess it can.
One point, I guess it concerns me, is the Highway 148 intersection at Greenwood Road. The left turn lane, there was nothing mentioned about that. Is that still part of the design that there's the traffic does not allow left turn lanes there? Just wondering if that is still being considered in the design.
So if I understand the question correctly, sorry, I foresee clarification. So a left turn lane on, there is a left turn lane existing now on 148 heading towards Quebec, right?
There is. But I'm talking about coming from Quebec to Greenwood and turning left there.
So separating the, it's a T-intersection though, right? So most of the traffic, yeah. So I think when you have a situation like that with a T-intersection, that traffic that comes up to the stop sign that would generally be mostly turning left, there is an entrance across the street, I believe, but that'd be pretty low volume. And then the right turn traffic would take the ramp, right?
Correct.
So I apologize, I don't have the drawings in front of me to say exactly whether or not we're building. I would suspect that it's probably staying the same because of the way that operates.
I suppose I'm thinking more in line of a set of lights again, or a faraway stop, something like that. The volume of traffic coming from further east is impeding, and often you sit there for 10, 15 minutes trying to make that left-hand turn.
I do know that our traffic section has been out this year to observe movements at the intersection. I know that we have obviously heard this concern from your community many, many times, and so our commitment is to continue to monitor the operation of that intersection and continue to watch it. I know the counts that we completed, I believe, last summer, still it doesn't line up for signals at this point with the counts. And so at this point, we're continuing to monitor the operation of that.
Thank you.
And the Counselor from Whitewater, and then from Petawawa.
I just wanted to thank you for the presentation as well. As a member of Whitewater, that intersection at Forests Falls and the highway is one of our own concerns, so I appreciate that. Thank you. And I just also wanted to highlight the recognition for that active transportation piece, widening the shoulders by two and a half meters for the last junction of 148, the sidewalk or some kind of multi-use trail along the rest of 148. I know that not, it's not just our residents that are transitioning in and out of the Pembroke area and Laurentian Valley, but it's tourism. So it's an important aspect for us, and I appreciate you've included that in your project. Thank you.
Thank you. And the member from Petawawa, please.
Thank you, Warden. Through you. Thank you, gentlemen, for coming and bringing us this update on some very important routes here in our county, and especially the update on the twinning of the Highway 17. And I know, I realize you can't give us any specific dates, and I know that's what everybody wants to hear, but it has taken 50 years to get us to this point. And the members of the upper area of this county are not sure we can wait another 50 years for it to finally reach us. Because as we know, this will have a huge effect on the county in terms of economic development, tourism, and all sorts of other things in that nature. And we do have two very significant areas of national interest here in terms of C and L and the Garrison as well. I guess my question is, when you're sitting down and you're going through the planning stages of what comes next, is there any other, ever any conversation in terms of starting from the northern end or the western end and working down towards, so for example, starting in Chalk River, moving towards Meath Hill, and perhaps meeting in the middle at some time, rather than waiting for another 50 years for it to get up to the western end?
Yeah, I acknowledge, I acknowledge the question, and I think we have, we have looked at that in concept before, and it may make sense. I mean, we're not, we're not at that point yet where we're considering the next phase of Highway 17 expansion. But typically, it would be based on sort of the traffic volumes in the area. And I can, I can recall that, I believe, yes, the traffic volumes in that Pembroke to Petawawa or Chalk River stretch are a bit higher than they are, say, in the Cobden stretch. So it may make sense that that would be the way that we might want to do it in the future. I can't say it's the way we're going to do it, but it certainly would be a consideration, one of the considerations we look at when we plan for twinning a highway obviously is the volume of traffic that's using it and the operational history of it. One of the challenges we see on that stretch of road is we've gone from, say, one signalized intersection to, I can't remember the total number now, but there's a number of signalized intersections which do interrupt the flow of traffic on Highway 17, obviously. And so at some point, you kind of look at it and say, okay, do we continue to do that or do we do something else, right? So is it the traffic volume that's actually causing the highway to lose its capacity, or is it the intersection density, et cetera? So there's many things to consider. I didn't really answer the question, I don't think, but I apologize for that, but.
No, and in fairness to you, you will likely hear from us with some ideas about that section in the next little while. We've started to have some conversation, a little bit of education around it. So that will be a logical next step for us within the next three or four months to come to you and start the conversation with the minister and the ministry and you about some ideas that we have. So we are looking ahead, recognizing that, you know, there's budget limitations and property acquisition and lights and history. So, yeah, we'll, we'll come to you with a series of proposals.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the question. Any further questions? So I'd like to, I'd like to thank you, first of all, for being here, but then secondly, because I think this is a great opportunity for our community to hear from you. And, you know, we're very grateful, and, you know, that's an overused word, but very grateful for the continued investment in the roadways, the provincial infrastructure that leads into our centers. You know, you've invested a lot of money over the years keeping those up to a standard, and then also with the connecting link projects, you know, in Renfrew, and I know Bonshire Valley has used that funding and others as well. So we're very, very grateful for that partnership, because it is a partnership. We try to match or dovetail our investment with the ministries. And so the relationship has been very good along for a great many years, so thank you for that. And your openness and ability for us to approach you with ideas and ask questions as we're tailoring our applications, so that's been very helpful. Quickly on 417, I note in your timeline, there wasn't anything about a hearing to cross the pipeline. Because that is, to me, that's a significant indicator of progress. And so, you know, we're, if you need assistance as an intervenor, we'd be more than happy to involve ourselves in that. And of course, you know, we've had comments in the past from various ministers that, you know, it'll be, it'll be passing Bruce Street in 2028. So that is in the public domain. And the sooner recognizing your limitations internally, the sooner you can define an end date. You know, I think then the communities can start planning, because some of us are planning infrastructure to the highway. We're planning UPSTAF and ECDAV areas and things like that, too. So just as soon as you have a workable schedule as best you can, then we can start tailoring our acquisitions and our infrastructure to that. But thank you very much for this. It's a very, it was a very informative day. Now that COVID has allowed us to be a little more flexible, we'll certainly make it an annual event again. And Darren, you know, I've had a lot of conversations over the years on various projects and appreciate your openness. Darren never takes offense when you ask him a question, and he just provides an answer. So pleased to have you back. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Okay. Thank you, Warden.
Thank you.
And I'm assuming Mr. Foss, you'll introduce our next delegation.
Thank you very much, Warden, and it is my pleasure this morning to introduce to you Lori Huber. Lori comes to us from KPMG. She is a partner with them, and she is here to present the 2022 draft and audited statements for the County of Renfrew on a consolidated basis. So welcome, Lori.
All right. Good morning. Thank you. Good morning, everyone. It's my real pleasure to be here. I guess I'm taller than what I think. Pleasure to be here before you to speak to the highlights of the 2022 audit. So I am a new face to this crowd. As Mr. Foss had mentioned, I'm responsible for the external audit of the County of Renfrew for the year ended December 31, 2022. Really excited to be here in person to you. I know I saw some of you online a few weeks ago at the committee, but certainly I will do a little bit of an overview again in terms of the audit. There are two attachments in your full package, one being the audit findings, which we'll see here in a minute, and the other piece is the draft consolidated financial statements, which will be heading for approval. Recognizing the financial statements have been precirculated as part of your package. I know management has done a presentation previous to today. In terms of the numbers, they have not changed, and I'll speak to some of the other items related to those. So jumping into the presentation, we should see the audit findings, which is the colored document. The statements, I think, are what's being shown on the screen currently. We will go to what we are calling the audit highlights, which is Slide 4 of our deck, which really gives you a summary of the overview of our audit. If you've had the opportunity to read through the package in advance, there's a lot of pages in here to say, essentially, the audit was executed in accordance with our plan. It was year one. We did consider the transition from the previous auditor as well. No significant findings to bring to your attention. So we are essentially complete in terms of our audit, and we will be looking for management to provide us a representation letter, assuming today is the date the council will approve the financial statements. In terms of our audit plan, we do each and every year develop a very detailed audit plan which covers off all of the significant captions that you will see on Page 6 of our report. I apologize, it doesn't appear to be on the screen. However, some of the things in there relate to our areas of focus and our materiality. We've executed our audit in accordance with our plan. We do audit a number of municipalities in Ontario, even locally through our Kingston office. So generally speaking, we generally come up with a general audit approach for municipalities and certainly tweak for any unique items that we'll see within your own financial statements. We do carry out what we call a risk-based audit, meaning we stand back, look at the financial statements as a whole, try to identify, we believe there's a greater risk of material misstatement occurring, and certainly addressing procedures to mitigate those risks. You will see in our audit findings report as well, I apologize, it's not on the screen. And you will see there is mention related to fraud risk. That certainly isn't meant to raise any alarm bells. Baked into any financial statement audit in Canada is a requirement for all the external auditors to consider the risk of fraud in any financial statements regardless of sectors. So we've done that this year, and certainly no significant findings to bring to your attention. Here we go, we're catching up on the screen, which is great. Moving on to the next slide, should be Page 8 in the bottom corner. There was a new audit standard that was required to be adopted as part of the audit this year related to a Canadian auditing standard, not a KPMG audit standard, relating to how we, as your external auditor, do our risk assessments. Included in there are enhanced requirements related to the risks related to the financial statements, and certainly related to information technology and including cybersecurity risk as well, which is new and different for the audit profession as a whole. In terms of findings, no significant findings to bring to your attention in that regard as well. In terms of the numbers themselves, if we move along to the next slide, which should be Page 9 of our report, we had set out as part of our audit plan for overall financial reporting materiality to be $3 million, which is essentially a percentage based on the volume of activity that you report on your consolidated statement of operations, which highlights the revenues and expenses in the year. To the extent we identified any differences greater than $150,000, that was our quantum to essentially have conversations with management and determine what might be impacted in terms of the financial statements. Pleased to report here today, in terms of the dollars and the numbers, there were not, no identified misstatements from our perspective. So the quality in the books and records of the amounts provided to us by management were certainly, were certainly adequate, and nothing from an intervention point of view from our perspective to bring to your attention. If we keep moving along to Page 11 of our report, you should see control deficiencies at the top of the slide. Just as a general informational item, in terms of any financial statement audit, we are very much required to gain an understanding of all the significant processes that culminate into the financial statements, certainly related to the financial reporting. So we've done that this year, certainly with a deep dive, starting from ground zero in terms of building our file in that regard, so taking a hard look at the processes, systems, and controls. Happy to report here today, from a significant deficiency point of view, there's certainly nothing from our perspective to bring to your attention. We have in our report giving you some other items for consideration that will be on our agenda for subsequent years, related to either best practices that we see elsewhere in the sector or other items for improvement, but certainly nothing from a significant deficiency control point of view to bring to your attention. If we move along to Page 15 of our deck, we should see significant accounting policies and practices in the following slide related to financial reporting. So going into fiscal 2022, there was actually no new accounting standards that were required to be adopted into the financial statements. So that was status quo. You might see that the look and feel of the financial statements themselves are a little bit different compared to previous years, that's somewhat of the KPMG way, but certainly the body and content of the statements themselves are very similar to what you would have been accustomed to in previous years, save for any operational items that were considered this year. In terms of what is new and different for the future, I will put, I will put it out there that there is a fairly pervasive new standard coming into play for fiscal 2023 called asset retirement obligations for the municipal sector as a whole. So stay tuned for that one. It will be a large-ticket item that we will certainly stay close with management as we work through the coming months to make sure that they and us are certainly adequately prepared for that adoption. In terms of required communications, if we flip down to Page number 18 of our deck, in terms of some of the items we should be having conversations with yourselves around, one is certainly our independence. We are your independent third set of eyes essentially on the financial statements and the financial reporting process. To the extent we might provide any non-audit services to the county through the course of the year, we should be upfront and transparent with respect to those, as they could be thought to seem to encroach on our independence. So pleased to report again here today, there's certainly nothing from our point of view that might be thought to encroach on our independence. Final piece to stop on is Page number 19 and the subsequent pages, which is really the culmination of all of our hard work on the external audit side, which is our single deliverable, which is our draft auditor's report. You will see it is in draft, subject to final approval by council, but it is a clean opinion that states that, in our opinion, we believe the financial statements do present fairly in all material respects, the financial statements of the county for the year ended December 31, 2022. You will notice there's one extra paragraph included in the audit report this year, which is on the top of Page 20, which is called other matter comparative information. So of course, being the first year of audit under KPMG, we are required to gain comfort around the opening balances from the predecessor audit. So I made the trip up here back in the fall 2022, reviewed their files for 2021, because of course, their ending 2021 numbers become our starting point for 2022. So that's new and different to respect the transition in fiscal 2022, and that will go away in subsequent years. The balance of the deck is really more informational items, not specifically addressing the financial statement audit for fiscal 2022. That's a high-level overview, but before I, before I pass it back to you and welcome any questions, really just want to take the opportunity to say a sincere thank you to the team. Transitioning auditors is not something that is taken lightly. It is an awful lot of work, and we certainly had full cooperation and no disagreements with management. They really were a pleasure to work with. So with that, I will pause and welcome any questions.
Thank you. And with that, if we could move to questions, please. The member from the Town of our Empire.
Thank you, Warden. Lori, could you expand on the community retirement that's coming down? You said there's going to be next year, there's a new get-ready-for, and I wrote down retirement.
That's right. So through you, Mr. Warden. So there is a new accounting standard coming into play called asset retirement obligations. It's going to be significant, and what it essentially means is today, the financial statements do not require an entity such as yourselves to consider what liabilities will come in the future related to anything related to remediation or environmental regulation. So a great example of that, certainly in the portfolio of assets, are things related to asbestos. If asbestos exists in buildings today, we know that that will need to be remediated at some point in the future. It's not required to be included in the financial statements. In this new standard in fiscal 2023, there will need to be an inventory of all of those items that will be part of this standard scope, and then a financial, a financial exercise to estimate the liability. So I would say, generally speaking, it came in April 1, 2022. We've lived it through now, through hospitals, colleges with March year ends, 95% of it 95% of it relates to asbestos in buildings typically. Other things like underground tanks is another one, any lease law obligations at the end of a lease, if you need to return the premises to the initial condition. All of those will be part of this new standard, and it will have an impact because at the end of the day, it will be an additional financial liability going on your financial statements. However, from a council perspective, I've been getting this question a lot on this new standard, the numbers tend to not be significant. I don't have a sense of what the numbers are here yet for this year coming. However, there is transitional provision, so it's not going to impact your in-year surplus deficit on adoption. It will in the future through likely amortization. However, from a council budgeting perspective in terms of cash, it's going to be treated more like an employee future benefit liability, which is an estimate today for the future, not necessarily something that's going to need to be repaid in the near term. So that's a high-level overview. Hopefully I haven't confused you, but it's it's going to be an interesting one.
Supplementary.
Thank you, Warden. Would that apply to municipalities as well then? So there's only 17 of us here, so we're going to get ready. Thank you.
Absolutely. It's a big one. It's a big one. So I sort of have a list of all of our municipals to say where are you sort of on the continuum to needing help, not needing help. It's a big one. There's been a lot of chatter even through the MFOA. I think all of the treasurers are very much aware of this. If they aren't, send them my way. Happy to enlighten them. It's not something, it's interesting, accounting standards come often, but it's not very often that they come with a big impact, and it's not something that you can sort of do off the side of your desk at the end of the year. So just having the conversation and the communication to say it's coming, I think, has been hopefully helpful.
Great.
Because there's a lot of municipalities to your point.
Thank you. Other questions, comments? Counsel from or member from Adamson Bromley, please.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and thank you very much, Ms. Hubers, for the, first off, for being here. I did was present at the Finance and Administration. First is a comment. I want to commend certainly our staff for the clean audit that is before us today and the outstanding work. This is a pretty complex organization and the the amount of effort that goes into this. So commend certainly our our financial staff here. My question, just one with respect to the audit itself, and I'm not certain if this is within your bailiwick or in fact if it may be for Mr. Foss, to draw attention to note 12, which is budget figures, where there is a kind of an attempt to reconcile this to to how the we as the council budget, et cetera. And the question that I had, and from our perspective, the the format that Mr. Foss, the Finance Department has, we have our PSAB and our municipal. So with respect to surplus deficit, it's a municipal surplus deficit, and then there's the PSAB surplus deficit. So ultimately, my question here is on the allocation of operating surplus to reserves of 950,000. And I'm I'm wondering how that number is derived when we reviewed the unaudited financials in April of this year. Renfrew County Housing, essentially the two long-term care homes almost canceled each other out in terms of surplus deficit. Ultimately, the consolidated surplus position was generated entirely through Renfrew County Housing Corporation. That was 700 and just under $800,000. Now, there had been in our discussion, council may remember from from April, there was an actual general surplus, but because of a a commitment by resolution already that that go to repay a loan that was taken out internally from reserves was another seven over about 725,000. So none of those figures match the 950. So I'm, it seems like perhaps there is a third configuration that's arriving at this number, and I'm not sure again if that's within your purview or Mr. Foss.
Certainly, Mr. Foss, I was busy looking for buttons here.
Thank you very much, Warden, and certainly thank you for the question. So as our member from Adamson Bromley said, in April of this year, we presented draft and unaudited financial statements to all committees and to County Council. In those draft statements, we reflected a surplus on a municipal position, if you will, of 732,000. That surplus is essentially the same as note number 12, where you see the number of 950,000. The difference is 218,068. And that is because in 2022, we made one final payment for an unfinanced capital program that we had in place. That was the Centennial Lake Bridge, where we, over a 10-year period, we borrowed, sorry, we did not plan for the financing of that cap that bridge, but we did plan to repay the funds that we used to build the bridge 10 years previous on an annual basis. So 2022 was the final payment that was made for 218,068. So that, in addition to the 732 that was presented in April, is the 950,000 within this note. Thank you, Warden.
Thank you. And are there any further questions? The member from Deep River, please.
Thank you, Warden. Back to the asset retirement obligations. It's been mentioned that this is significant, but what what's not being said here is that this is this is an accounting standard, and I never heard anywhere where we need to fund this liability. We have lots of liabilities that we don't fund. But are you suggesting, and I I know where these go in the future, but at this point in time, are we obligated to fund this liability?
So, Mr. Warden, you would be, but I would also suggest that it would be part of your normal budgeting process. It's early days. I have yet to see anyone set aside a reserve, if you will, for this item because it's it's really, it's a long-term item that's not necessarily directly related to cash payments in the near term. If that answers the question.
Okay, it leaves some squirmish, and I think we'll be having a very in-depth discussion of budget.
At the end of the day, I think it is council's decision in terms of in terms of the funding or not.
Good. Thank you very much. Any further questions, comments? So with that, thank you very much. We know that it's been a challenge, an interesting challenge, I'm sure, for for you to step into our our organization. It's very, it's very complex, as the member from Adamson Bromley noted, and we make it increasingly complex every year by doing innovative things. And so I'd also like to to recognize Mr. Foss and his department because to transition from, you know, a comfortable, accomplished relationship where the the team that had been auditors before had been in and out for so many years and had a pretty intimate knowledge of of our operations. So it's very important to recognize change does cause a ripple in in relationships and in work in in work patterns. And I know that in speaking with with you, when you talk to me, you noted how important it was to to be on site and to collect information. So thank you very much for being here today. And to Mr. Foss, please extend our gratitude to your department as well. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
And Mr. Kelly, if you could introduce with great apology our next delegation, please.
Absolutely. Thank you, Warden. So with us today is Meredith Staveley Watson, who is a manager of of policy with, sorry, manager of government relations and policy with the Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus, and another fellow who I'm sure some of you might recognize is Jim Pine, the former, soon-to-be former CEO of Hastings County as he exits tomorrow or Friday, and definitely a key builder of EORN and the caucus over the years. So I'd like to welcome both to a long, a long waitlist of waiting for us today. So apologies once again for the delay, but take it away.
Okay. Good morning, County Council. It's wonderful to be here today to present to you. I'm going to go over a quick overview of the EUWC and our strategic priorities, and then I'm going to pass it over to CAO Jim Pine to explain our seven and seven regional housing project in more detail. Perfect. So just starting the PowerPoint now, the EUWC is an incorporated nonprofit organization that's comprised of the 13 upper and single-tier municipalities from across rural East Ontario, and we cover an area of approximately 50,000 square kilometers. And so from Northumberland County all the way east to the Quebec border, and then all the way, of course, up to Renfrew, Renfrew County. The EUWC supports and advocates on behalf of a total of 103 municipalities, and this is about 750,000 residents, and we work to champion priorities and work with governments, stakeholders, the media, and the public. So the EUWC also was established in 2002 and incorporated in 2008, and we found that people have really paid attention when you come together with that regional voice to do larger-scale projects that municipalities perhaps could could not do alone. So just here is a quick list showing our map as well as our 13, our 13 members who have a tremendous amount of that rural expertise, and we certainly bring that voice to the table when we meet with our our levels of government. Next slide, please. So just quickly, I mentioned at a high level what we do. So a tremendous amount of advocacy, which includes communications, various meetings and partnerships with organizations like AMO, FCM, Western Wardens Caucus, the Eastern Ontario Mayor's Caucus, Rural Ontario Institute, recently we met with the Ontario Chamber Commerce, and many others. I know the Chair, myself, the Vice Chair, Clark, have really been busy trying to get our outreach out this year and and meet meet folks across the province. As well, just our governance framework here, of course, we're all familiar with the Chair, Warden, Warden Eman for 2023. Our Vice Chair is Bonnie Clark, the Warden of Peterborough County. And then, of course, the CAOs are directed and take advice from from the 13 elected officials from our members. And then on the staff side, the Secretary Treasurer is your CAO Craig Kelly, who I work very close with as manager, and then I also work in partnership with Heather Rightly, who's our Policy and Administrative Coordinator. This summer, we also have started our inaugural internship program and have Mary Farvold in on with us. And as it relates to each of our strategic priorities, we do have staff working groups that inform those and and come up with recommendations and and information. Next slide. So just here, I won't go over this too much in detail. The next few slides just cover some of the things that we've been up to in terms of our advocacy, our representation. We did speak on main stage at the FCM conference. Recently released a paramedic services report, et cetera. So I'll just ask to flip through the next few. Just shows that we've been busy over the last last few years, and the caucuses work on behalf of the region of rural East Ontario. So just keep flipping through the past successes, please. Thank you. There's a lot of them there. Perfect. So I'm just going to cover very quickly our three priorities, strategic priorities for 2023. So the first one being affordable and attainable housing, and which is kind of the main one that we've been pushing. So under under the strategic priority of affordable, attainable housing, last June, the EUWC held a regional housing summit, and that was made up of municipal staff from across various departments and across both our local and upper-tier municipalities. So we got together to gather information, share feedback, and also come up with different recommendations for ourselves as the region, as well as for the federal and provincial governments. And so this information has been put into our advocacy at our most recent conferences at Roma, that was in January, and also coming up to AMO this August. And this is also where our seven and seven plan was initially born. Next slide, please. You may have heard the EUWC was successful in getting a grant from CMHC through their housing supply challenge for about 1.4 million, and this was towards the development of the RHIS, the Rural Housing Information System. And we saw kind of a gap in rural housing data. So the tool is a centralized online tool, so a website that you can visit that aims to help in the planning and the development of housing across rural communities. And so right now, that's going to be launching this this summer, so hopefully July, for our 103 members, who will have free access for the next two, two years to the tool. The EUWC, of course, was the founder of this tool, but we've handed over management and operation now to the Rural Ontario Institute, ROI, and I know that they'd be happy as well to come and present the tool and and share with elected officials and staff how the RHIS works. But to to name a few, and if you go to the next slide, you can go on the tool, they have a, you can compare across communities in terms of market rent, in terms of asset, in terms of different properties and zoning available. So it's kind of a one-stop shop for elected officials, staff, the private sector, so real estate agents, developers, to go and figure out how to to plan for and develop housing across rural communities. And they are also expanding it to the west as well. Next slide, please. So the seven and seven, I'm not going to steal Jim's thunder here, so I'll let him take that, take that away in a few minutes. So next slide, please. Under housing advocacy, we also are priority, I should say, we also have two other sub-priorities. So the financial framework, so just calling on the government to develop strong financial framework that supports municipalities. As we all know, municipalities in Ontario are the only province where municipal government has to operate and support social community housing. So we really believe that that framework and in order to have good quality, sustainable housing needs to be in place. The second kind of sub-priority under housing is standardizing the definitions that the federal and provincial governments have brought forward. So that includes affordable housing and attainable housing. So asking them to come up with streamlined definitions amongst each other and also making sure that the measurements that are associated with them are streamlined between the two orders and also work for rural communities. Next slide, please. Our next second priority of the three is paramedic services. And so we've been long calling that municipalities deserve a seat, a dedicated seat at the table, AKA pay for say, or say for pay, I should say, got that wrong, and just making sure that we are in in the fold and part of those conversations when it comes to community healthcare. So recently, and right before the pandemic, the EUWC published a report, which was a situational overview covering regional data around call times, service time, dispatch, et cetera, related to paramedic services. Next slide, please. And so this was launched right before the COVID-19 pandemic. Since that time, the caucus decided to refresh this report so that so that it showed data from throughout the pandemic as well as post-pandemic to show if numbers have gone out, down, stayed the same, et cetera, and to really build upon our previous advocacy and make sure that it was current. So from that report, which is available on our website, so please feel free to visit in in more detail, these are the four recommendations that came out. So one, permanent, sustainable and predictable funding to support paramedic services as well as community paramedicine program efforts. Secondly, modernizing the dispatch system to improve the prioritization of calls and level of service. Thirdly, reducing offload delays at hospitals, and this would allow paramedics to spend more hours in their communities. And fourthly, increasing enrollment for paramedic services in community colleges. And as I said, this is all evidence-based, and I'd like to thank our local chiefs from municipalities as well for working towards this this full summer report that we will be bringing forward at with Minister Jones at the upcoming AMO conference. Next slide, please. Our third priority is long-term care. Our third priority is long term care for twenty twenty-three. And so again, following the same vein, really uh, calling for that save for pay and being at the decision making table. The E W C was successful a few years ago, um, and was an early caller of the four hours of care model at which the province is now implemented. But now we're saying, thank you very much for doing that, but you need to make sure that there's the support and staffing in place in order to to get to that level of care that we want to get to. So this year, we're advocating that the province uh, implement a fulsome support of a human resources strategy that works for not only urban but rural homes. Secondly, we're calling on the province to regulate staffing agencies and nursing agencies that are uh, really impacting our municipal long term care home budgets. So we've been working with Advantage who uh, and and A M O as well. And Advantage covers all the long term care homes uh, in the nonprofit uh, and public and a bit of the private space as well. And to make sure that these are, these are controlled so we can keep our budgets um, in order and also make sure that there's staff available in our long term care home. And thirdly, modernize, uh, calling uh, that the province modernize the long term care funding, funding framework to make sure that it's equitable for our rural home. Perfect. Next slide. Uh, as you may be aware, the U W C also covers continued advocacy items. And so these are issues of ongoing importance. Maybe they're not considered one of our main strategic priorities. Um, but we do work with our member municipalities and depending on the political climate to to advocate for priorities uh, that are from a regional perspective that impact all thirteen of our members. And again, I'm not gonna go through this in detail, but again, just showing what we've been up to in terms of our advocacy, conferences, budget submissions, various meetings, various consultations uh, throughout the the past number of years. So we can just flip, flip right through that. And our contact information, we are in the process right now of actually updating our website, so stay tuned for that. I hope you visit it once it's been updated. Um, please feel free to reach out to myself, the Chair, Vice Chair um, through the email there. And please also feel free to follow us on Twitter and uh, more recently LinkedIn. Thank you. We'll pass it over to Jim when we will wait till the end to take questions.
Uh, thank, thank you very much. Uh, and um, very quickly, as as Chair, I'd like to thank uh, the County of Renfrew uh, for their um, excellent leadership over the years. We've been very fortunate with Warden uh, Warden Swede assuming the Chair. Uh, we've had Warden Robinson be in the Chair and we've had, we've had Warden Murphy be the Vice Chair. So uh, we, you know, we've had a very significant involvement and we've always had great staff involvement from uh, from, I'm sure Jim will remember this name, Norm Lemke through Jim Hutten, through Paul Moro uh, to Craig at this point. Because what happens as you, as you saw with the chart is that uh, you know, Craig, the C A L assumes a, a very large role. Even when we're not in, you know, when Craig is not in that role, staff from our municipality and other municipalities, whether it's Mr. Foss, Mr. Nolan, uh, Mr. Perkins, uh, have been invited in uh, to task forces and to provide information. So the Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus does not function without all thirteen members contributing ideas, information and staff time. That has led to a brand that's known as reliable with good information, well researched and solutions. We don't go whining into a minister, we walk in, we plunk down a document that's based on research and and suggest there's a solution forward. And so when you take a look at the, the slide deck, we're gonna send it to you, you'll see uh, uh, a number of successes every year from two thousand and five until today. And so I'm very proud of what the Wardens Caucus has, has been able to accomplish on your behalf and with our partnership with you. So thank you very much. And so with that, I'm gonna lead in very quickly uh, to uh, a portion of seven and seven. We're very excited about this and then Jim will take it over. Uh, so thank you for the invitation today and the opportunity to speak to you today about the Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus, seven and seven regional housing plan. As the twenty twenty-three Chair for the Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus, I'm pleased to be here today and to be joined by someone who I admire greatly and and depend upon, uh, Jim Pine. And increasingly, I depend upon Meredith for her wisdom and she's here with us as well as the Caucus Manager of Government Relations and Policy. I know our time with you is short today due to my inept uh, managing of the meeting. And we're going to share the podium, so I'll, I'll get started. I believe that I can safely assume that housing and particularly the lack of affordable housing is one of your council's top concerns. And I've heard from you on a regular basis about it. I know it is for the thirteen members of the Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus. In fact, tackling the housing and related homelessness issue is our primary priority as a group. There is a chronic and serious supply problem of not only regular housing, but community or social housing across our region. And that is certainly the situation here in the County of Renfrew. Wait lists for community housing continue to grow. Across Eastern Ontario, we know that there are between twelve thousand and fourteen thousand households in desperate need of access to community housing that our municipalities operate. People on our community waiting lists, whether it's here or in other counties, are left waiting on average four and a half years. And in some cases, up to ten years to get access to safe, affordable community housing. Each of us in our jurisdictions have been doing our best over the years to try and tackle this supply challenge. While we may have made progress, it's just not enough to solve the problem. That's why the Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus has come together to put our collective resources and experience into a bold new regional solution. It's big, it's bold, it's doable. We know that a different approach to try and solve the housing supply problem has to be found. The seven and seven plan offers a chance to really make a profound difference. The Wardens Caucus is a leader in delivering big regional projects. Our broadband and cellular projects through the Eastern Ontario Regional Network are examples of solving problems region wide. I'm hopeful, we're hopeful that your council will continue to see merit in this approach and will support our efforts to convince the federal and provincial governments to partner with us well, with us as well. We need both to participate in in this plan. And with that, I'll turn it over to uh, Jim to introduce the plan to you. Thank you, Jim.
Thanks very much, Your Honor, Members of Council. Uh, let me first apologize for not being able to be there in person with you today. Um, as uh, as your C A O noted, I'm on the final uh, few hours of my tenure here at Hastings County as C A O. Uh, so I did use a bit of time as we were waiting to throw uh, some of my notes uh, into the, into the recycling barrel. Um, but it was, I was still listening to all the good stuff that's going on with your M T O folks, for instance. I did notice, actually, I I opened up a book and I actually came to a page and I, this is absolutely true. It's two thousand and eight, October, and it was like notes from a meeting that the C A, some of the C A Os, including myself, had it with senior federal staff back in two thousand and eight, who said to us, you need to incorporate the E W C in order to receive federal funds for projects. And that was what started the whole incorporation process for the E W C all those years ago. Kind of, kind of funny, just come across that note. But I'm really here just to uh, to speak to you about uh, uh, as the Chair indicated, our uh, our housing plan called seven and seven. We'll just quickly go through a slide deck and we can take questions uh, after. Next slide. Like our broadband projects in the past, uh, what we're really trying to do is uh, provide um, a, a new project that will cover the entire E W C area, including the separated municipalities and cities uh, that are are part of Eastern Ontario. And as you all know, this is an area, as Meredith noted, uh, that has about seven hundred and fifty rural, thousand rural residents. But when you put in the urban uh, citizens as well, it's really approaching one point three million. So a fairly large uh, community, if I can put it that way. Um, and it covers an area about the same size as the province of Nova Scotia. So uh, this is the service area that the project uh, uh, will try to accommodate in terms of getting more of these units uh, built. So next slide. Uh, as uh, as Warden indicated, uh, we, we recognize that as a group that there are a lot of households, uh, probably more than fourteen thousand now across uh, the E W C uh, membership that where people wait far too long uh, to get uh, uh, housing. And these are our folks that we care about through our wait lists, of course. But on those wait lists are other kinds of folks too, who are uh, you know, working uh, but still in need of of affordable housing. So it's, it's trying to solve for a whole range of of different kinds of households who need um, affordable housing and attainable housing. So it's a big challenge and we just have to do something about it. As uh, as the Chair said, we've all tried to do this on our own lane. Uh, but the moment is clear that we need to work together to try and and solve for this problem in a big, bold way. Next slide. We also wanna make clear that we see this as being a part of the province's overall goal of one point five million uh, new uh, uh, housing units across the province. But we wanna make sure that we aren't leaving anybody behind in terms of of uh, types of housing uh, required. So we really are looking at uh, in essence, actually building about twenty-eight thousand new rental units, seven thousand of which would be rent geared to income kind of uh, of uh, affordable units that could serve our, our, our clients on, on the waitlist. So it is a big project, but we see it as part of the province's plan as well. And we wanna be, as the Chair said, a real partner with the province in trying to push for uh, more supply. As I mentioned, it's a big project at about twenty-eight thousand, seven thousand of which would be on the R G I side. In order to do this, we've got a lot of work to do. But one of the things that we noticed back in January of this year, uh, Scotiabank came out with a report that really, uh, I think validated in a very big way the Wardens Caucus uh, uh, idea to build a project like we're proposing. Scotiabank recommended to both Canada and the provinces that uh, at least a doubling of community or social housing stock had to take place ac- across the country in order to serve people with the the greatest needs. And that was the best solution to unlock uh, a greater supply across the whole housing continuum. Um, they felt that if we can build more, it should reduce uh, rental prices for sure, the cost of renting. And but it's the fourth bullet point that I find the most interesting coming out of Scotiabank is that they are saying directly to the senior levels of government that they need to include what they call much higher rates of concessionality, which is really just greater grant based investments uh, into building the stock. We need federal and provincial investments to make this kind of housing happen. And then we've done it before federally and provincially thirty, forty years ago. There was a, obviously, a, a massive push on housing. The time has come again uh, for both levels of government to get involved. And really, at the end of the day, this is the best way to do the work. To get it done though, we, we know that this bold investment, and it is an investment, is going to require all of the members of the E W C to participate, the federal and provincial governments, the private sector, and of course, importantly, the not-for-profit sector who are big uh, players in the space. So we all need to come together in order to make this uh, a reality. And the next slide uh, shows you that it is a big uh, project that we're proposing. Just to get the seven thousand units uh, constructed is about a three point one billion dollar investment. That's based on uh, an average uh, cost of building uh, of about four hundred and forty thousand dollars a unit. That doesn't include the purchase of land or servicing. We know that's, that's extra. But this comes out of the experience that we've all had in um, in our own housing uh, operations across the E W C. So we're pretty confident in, in that number. The good news about uh, building residential housing like we're proposing is that it is one of the best ways of stimulating uh, an economy. It has at least a three times multiplier effect uh, for uh, for a project like this. So what it really says is we get the twin benefit of being able to house people more quickly for those who really need it. Uh, and at the same time, we grow our local economies in a big way. Uh, as they say, building housing is one of the best ways uh, to stimulate the economy. You can imagine all of the work that would happen locally with all of the trades and others who work in the housing space uh, in the construction site. So it has that twin benefit of growing the economy, but also the so- social benefit of getting people housed and all of that, uh, which is important to the social determinants of health as well, housing being one of the biggest ones. So it's got, I think, uh, a real uh, great purpose in terms of a project. Next slide. This slide just tries to help you imagine what it might look like. Um, and so what we did was, as we have done in uh, in the previous uh, broadband project, simply take the region and create a number of of zones. We did this on purpose in order to help uh, imagine what it would look like. But also, as we get to the procurement side, if we do it on a zone basis, we believe that we can make sure that uh, local and regional companies can participate in a project like this. So that three billion dollar investment is really um, allocated based on the percentage share of a zone's uh, share of the overall waitlist that we had uh, calculated back last year, about fourteen thousand. So in the case of Renfrew, which you'll see is its own zone, that it represents uh, uh, about eight point four percent of of the waitlist. So that translates into the two point, two hundred and twenty-six million dollars in terms of the share of the investment that would come to the Renfrew, Renfrew Zone. And you can see what it looks like across the rest of the zones as we've put them together. The next slide will show you a little bit about how these uh, the units themselves would be allocated, the numbers. So if we're allocating from the seven thousand based on the same percentage share of the waitlist, about just under six hundred units would, would come Renfrew's way. And you can see how they would be distributed across the rest of of Eastern Ontario. This is just a notional way of doing it. I'm sure this will change. But it gives, I think, just gives you an idea of what it could look like uh, once we get to the construction uh, phase of the project. Next slide. So we'll look, look a little more closely at the Renfrew Zone. Again, you would get just under uh, six hundred units uh, of the six hundred. The next slide, again, you'll see, just to reinforce uh, just over uh, two hundred and twenty-six million dollars uh, of the, of the work. It is a plan that has, as I mentioned, the potential to drive the economy forward for years, uh, for years to come. And we think that's a really big uh, and important selling point for the project, as well as, I say, the social benefit of housing folks. The next slide. But we know, we recognize that without uh, partnerships, it can't happen. As uh, uh, Warden uh, Emon mentioned, we need the federal, provincial uh, and private sector and not-for-profit sectors to join with us to make this happen. But that's what we've done in the past with our broadband projects. We know we can do this. The E W C has a, a lot of credibility as a result of the work that we've done with the two broadband, or the broadband and the cell project that Eorn is doing on behalf of the Wardens Caucus. That's over five hundred million dollars worth of project work. So we've got lots of experience in doing these big, these big projects. Uh, earlier this year, we brought in a, a third party consulting firm, uh, K W M Consulting to help us uh, with building a, the business case and to validate the idea, this project, does it make sense? And we've just received that report and it'll be going to the Wardens Caucus in, in a couple of weeks. But the good news is it certainly validated uh, what we're proposing to do and making this kind of regional project happen. Next slide. Um, as I said, we've been, we've been busy since the Wardens back uh, last summer said get going uh, on this uh, idea. Uh, we, over the winter, we've done the business case. We've been working with senior levels of government to seek support. Um, very soon, we'll be beginning some consultations with our indigenous communities, which is very important, as you well know. Uh, and we've been working with the private and not-for-profit sectors, the construction industry, the building industry uh, as we, as we move the project forward. We hope that by this fall, we'll be in a position to launch a, a pilot project in one of the zones to put proof of concept to the test. In other words, to try and build something that uh, would show that, that it's quite feasible. And then with uh, uh, everything going well, uh, we hope that we can be in the process of uh, releasing R F Ps for construction next winter. We know that we can't wait, uh, that this needs to happen. It takes time to build. It makes, takes time to get through approvals process. And there's a lot of work that we are doing um, behind the scenes now to try and make this happen. Um, and uh, the support that we hope uh, Renfrew County Council will give uh, to the project through a resolution uh, would be something you would consider today or or sometime soon. I just wanna say thank you um, for all of the times personally that you have given me the opportunity and so generously invited me into your chambers over the years. Uh, it has been a huge pleasure for me to be able to come to Renfrew County. It's always one of my favorite, favorite trips. And on a personal, I just urge you as members of County Council to continue to do the incredibly good work that you're doing for the ratepayers and the citizens in your municipalities and across the county. I'm a big believer that without uh, elected I'm a big believer that without elected officials like yourselves and the great staff that supports you, that we will be a much poorer place if we weren't as committed as we, as we have been. I know you will do that. I just, as I retire, I'm going to be the guy with the sandwich board that stands on the corner, but I'm going to be saying, government is good, support your local council, because I really do believe in it. Thank you for all of your service. And Kerry, I hope you will carry on with that. I hope we will see you at some point in the future. We have a little video now, just to wrap up and happy to take any questions afterwards. Thank you very much, Your Honor. Can we play the video?
The Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus has a track record of bringing people together to solve problems that are too big for any one government or industry. For more than a decade, the EOWC has collaborated with governments and the private sector on regional scale solutions. Now it's coming together along with partner service managers to address the housing crisis. On average, people in Eastern Ontario can wait five to 10 years for affordable community housing. We all know something must be done. The province aims to build 1.5 million homes by 2031. This goal must meet the needs of all Ontarians, rural and urban. The EOWC has a bold regional solution to tackle the waitlist. Over seven years, the EOWC wants to help build 7,000 new rental units. Taking a more public-private approach, the plan would build a mix of community and market housing. The investment could spur thousands of more housing units across the region, helping to meet the needs of people across different incomes, ages, and stages of life. The EOWC plan takes a collaborative and innovative approach to building new supply, from funding to servicing. Greater economies of scale would reduce costs to build more faster. We are ready to work with the provincial and federal governments, as well as for-profit and nonprofit partners. Join us to create strong communities where everyone can afford a place to call home.
Thank you. And with that, we'll move to questions, comments, concerns from members of council. We'll go to the member from Bonshire Valley and then Adamson Bromley.
Thank you, Warden. This isn't about the Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus presentation, but it is. I just wanted to thank Jim, who was a fantastic supporter of mine when I was the warden of the county. Jim, I can't even imagine your county without you. I can see you're emotional. I'm emotional. I only found out about your retirement, I think, last week maybe. So congratulations and, you know, enjoy your retirement. I, I think you'll be back to do something at some level. That's just knowing you, but you, you will be greatly missed. So thank you for everything you've done for Eastern Ontario.
Thank you very much. I, I will be around for a little bit doing a few odds and sods for EORN, I think.
I understand that. I heard. I'm trying to add a few things to that list for you. And so with that, Adamson Bromley, please.
Thank you so much, Mr. Warden, and thank you, Jim. The presentation, it is bold. I think that's a key word. I think that that's perhaps the takeaway that all of us in the, the east of Ontario should be, should be latching on to. I think it is time for bold initiatives, bold moves. So thank you very much for that. Certainly want to echo Council Murphy's comments as well. I'm certain that the, the residents of Hastings County will be saddened at your departure because your, your commitment and passion for Eastern Ontario has certainly been on clear display any of the time you've been in our chamber. And I know much of the time when you're not in our chamber, but you're still working on behalf of, of Eastern Ontario. That commitment has been prevalent. As a final note, do please send pictures of the sandwich board.
You can count. I'd be happy to come and, and stand on your street corner if you want me to.
Perfect. Thank you. Is there any other questions? The member from Whitewater Region, please.
Thank you, Chair. Just a quick question. I know that we're going to see later on in, in today's present, or today's agenda, a discussion from our Roma rep about the Prince Edward County Affordable Housing Corporation. And I'm just wondering if Jim could share any insights of how this seven and seven plan would integrate with those kinds of initiatives that are happening within our zones, if that's, if that's something that can be integrated or if it's independent. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Your Honor. Through you, I'll, I'll try. I think what we've been saying throughout the course of our discussions as we've gone around the region with this idea is that every idea is on the table in terms of how we implement ultimately this, this project. So we, we haven't specifically landed on this is exactly how it's going to be, you know, run or owned or whatever, because we want to make sure we hear what options might be, be available. Some will talk about wanting to add it, you know, of the 7,000, add it to their own stock that we already own as housing corporations at our, in our counties. Some will want to work with the private sector and some will want to work with the pri, the not-for-profit sector. So I guess the best way to say it is that all ideas are, are on the table and we want to make sure that we tailor it to what the needs are locally. One of the goals, I think, generally that the Wardens Caucus has is to make sure that housing gets built in our rural communities, because we want people to be able to, A, stay and work in the communities, because people who are working need this kind of rental accommodation. But we also want to make sure that we keep people, you know, from having to, to move out of the community if we can, if we can at all avoid it. So it really is about making sure the benefit comes, comes locally as well as for the region as a whole.
And if I could just add to Jim's comments, we, we were in Prescott Russell, we heard about a, a concept they were advancing. And we've been in front of Belleville City Council and they have something, and the Mayor's Caucus has something. So this is going to be a, an interesting process, because you, you know, I think what we're trying to do is facilitate it, build the plan, fund it, and then incorporate the many parts so, you know, that the communities feel that they've got good value. So it'll be an interesting process, but not undoable. So, thank you. Are there any further questions, comments? Seeing none. Meredith, thank you very much for your patience today in waiting for us. Meredith is very busy, as you can see from the list of things. She keeps Bonnie, myself as the vice chair, herself as the vice chair, myself, very, very busy. We want to be busy. Bonnie and I made a commitment in conversation with Craig and with Meredith, and, and Jim was part of that conversation as well. We wanted the Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus to resume a position of, of being a primary mover of, of all things that need to occur in, in our community. So that has meant, you know, a great deal of scheduling and appearing, making presentations and writing letters. And Meredith has been simply a, a dream to work with. You know, we present some murmurs and mumblings and she turns it into policy for us. So Meredith, thank you very much for that. And, you know, and I, I know Craig would, has said that to you hopefully every day, but at least once a week. And, and I wanted to make, make it public. So thank you very much, Meredith. And Jim, I think you, Jim's a great guy to work with. You know, he always, he always has great ideas. He flushes them out. And even if he's wrong, which he is sometimes, you still get along with him, because you're, you know, three seconds later, you're working on something with him. So I, this is my second go around his chair, and then I was with the Wardens Caucus for five years and often would, not often, on occasion we'd be picked to make a presentation. And so I was able to lean on, on Jim for his, his expertise. And sometimes we were pivoting and twisting and moving the, the idea in the hallway with a pen, because we, he had heard something or one, somebody had heard something from a minister or a minister's aide. And we made a lot of pitches for money over the years, and he's always been successful because of his, because of his caring, his knowledge. And he, and he always knows the person. So it's great. And so, Jim, thank you for that, as a chair. And then more personally, you know, the times we've had outside of a meeting hall or, or waiting to make a presentation have been so valuable for me. And so thank you for sharing and, you know, your time and your expertise with me personally. It's been a very enjoyable relationship. And I'm, I'm aware of your, your ongoing relationship, and I know that we'll be using you for some other things. So, but again, thank you for your, your experience, your guidance, and just your wisdom. It's been a, been a real pleasure for me personally, and then, as I say, as a, as a chair. So thank you for that.
Thank you very much. I, I'm humbled, and it's just been a huge pleasure for me too. And I've enjoyed every minute of it, working with you and all of the members of, of the past and present in Renfrew County Council. Just as I said, keep doing the great work that you're doing. We need it. Thank you.
We'll follow your example. So with that, folks, again, thank you to our two, our two presenters. We'll take a break now for lunch, and we will try to be back here at 1 o'clock. I wouldn't be opposed to 1:05, so if we start slinking into 12:59, we'll work it out after that. Thank you. and we will try to be back here at 1 o'clock. I wouldn't be opposed to 1:05, so if we start slinking into 12:59, we'll work it out after that. Thank you.
Thank you.
In the essence of time and your attentiveness before the turkey thing kicks in from our lunch, I'll suggest we move to closed, and I'm going to be looking for a motion, closed meeting. Move to close pursuant to section 239 of the Municipal Act 2001 as amended for the purpose of: A) Labor relations or employee negotiations (collective bargaining); B) Personal matters about an identifiable individual (reorganization); and C) A subject that has solicitor-client privilege including communications necessary for that purpose (property purchase). With that, the mover is the member from Adamston Bromley and then the member from Horton. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? None? Thank you, counsel, and with that we'll be enclosed.
Thank you very much to our viewers and to council and staff for their patience as we've gone through some very important business. First of all, I'd like to make note, you know, I think council's comfortable with this, I did not add a D to the closed motion, which should have read, information supplied in confidence to the municipality by another level of government with regards to RCV TAC. And so I think council's comfortable with the fact that I've identified that omission, and the NAA discussions that we had enclosed about this were not of significance and would alter previous plans, but rather was information to supplement what we already knew. So, thank you. And so, again, I have a resolution number DPCC 2306-80. So it's moved by Chair, seconded by Committee, that County Council adopt a bylaw approving the purchase of property at 34254 Highway 41, Eaganville, Ontario, in the amount of $1.6 million for a future paramedic base. And further, that staff be directed to further proceed with the retrofit and current costs at an estimated value of $483,000, $483,200,000 to be financed from the building reserves. And further, that the Warden and Clerk be authorized to execute all documentation to finalize the purchase of this project. And so with that, I would turn to Mr. Davis for some background information.
Thank you, Warden, and through you two County Councilors. And this has been a very long process since 2022 February, looking at a new paramedic station in the village of Eaganville Bonnershire Valley. Just on a brief note, currently, we're in the municipal office, the paramedic program is in the municipal office of Bonnershire Valley, shared with the fire services. And both programs have outgrown their community needs, and we've been approached to use this property we're going to be purchasing if passed as a new paramedic station in the village of Eaganville. Again, we've done our due diligence for environmental reports, we've done our due diligence for cost estimations moving forward, so it fits with Chief Nolan's paramedic program for VTAC and things like that. And we have payment plans in place to move forward with this purchase. And maybe I'll leave it at that, Warden, as a quick summary.
Thank you very much. Comments, questions, concerns from the floor, please? Okay, so I guess I'll make a comment. It's very important that the County of Renfrew be seen servicing all of our community. We're a vast space, people are living all over the county. When I look to my friend Mayor Weir, they live out in Griffith and Mattlewatchan, and they live in Hardwood Lake. When I look at Mayor Yon, and in Berry's Bay, and Willno, and beyond that. And I think we're seen as being too tied to the Highway 17 corridor. So I think, you know, by purchasing this property, this gives us a place to start moving some of our community initiatives, whether in paramedics or other divisions within the county, outwards, so that people, more people have access to them. So I think this is a much bigger move than we realize today. Like, most things we do, we're innovative, we establish a footprint, and then all of a sudden, the creativity of staff and community come together, and we end up having a much bigger project that better serves our community. So I'm very pleased to see this, because I think it's important to our whole community, it's important to our paramedic division, but it's certainly important to the community to have us seen in the community, and to establish new programs. So I'm very, very proud of us to have brought this forward today. And the mayor, sorry, the member from North Agona Wilberforce.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. And I just would like to add to your comments as well, this new facility, or repurposed facility, will allow for the mechanic that works for the county and services these vehicles to have more space and a unique location to provide that service as well.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? A member from Bonnershire Valley, please.
Just again, a thank you to all the staff and the current property owners for all the work that they put in to make this happen. It's not that Bonnershire Valley wants to kick the paramedics out, but it's certainly going to be a nice new home for them, and give us a bit of breathing room for our fire department. Also, if you want the OPP, just let me know, because we can get them out of their closet, too. Thank you.
Thank you. So with that, seeing no more comment, I'd like to call the vote. All of those in favor? Opposed, none, it's carried. Thank you, council. And to echo the member from Bonnershire Valley, thank you, staff and the family for working through this process. It's a public process, that brings some impediments to how quickly you can move, because everything has to come back to us, and we only meet once a month. So, you know, it's definitely impedes it, but also brings a level of security for the public, you know, that we're doing our due diligence, secondly, and that we're investing wisely. So, thank you. With that, I'll call on the member from Amis and Bromley to speak to us about the striking committee, please.
Correspondence?
God. Correspondence, Mr. Kelly.
She got to it before I did. All the correspondence received has been forwarded to the appropriate committee. Thank you.
Thank you. We should just have a little button I could push for that. So with that, committees and striking committee, please. A member from Amis and Bromley.
Thank you very much, Mr. Warden. To the council, the corporation of the County of Renfrew, we, your striking committee, wish to report and recommend as follows. By the way, I was remiss, the report was provided by Ms. Grunts this morning via email. Within the body of the email, it does identify that it's a striking, there was unfortunately a typo at the top of what was emailed, but it is in fact the striking committee report. Just wanted to make clear. We, your striking committee, wish to report and recommend as follows. Item one under bylaws, Community Health Programs Advisory Committee. Resolution number ST-CC-23-06-03, moved by Chair, seconded by Committee, that County Council approve that a Community Health Programs Advisory Committee be formed as an ad hoc to the Health Committee, consisting of representatives from different institutions and areas of relevance within the broader healthcare system, to offer their diverse, relevant, and extensive perspectives of healthcare leadership experience. Further, that bylaw number 1-23 be repealed, and a revised bylaw to appoint the county committees for the ensuing year or until their successors are appointed be adopted. And, Mr. Warden, the background is attached, and of course, this is, there is just the single change to the bylaw to now introduce the CHPAC Advisory Committee, all of which is respectfully submitted by myself as Chair, along with committee members Rose, Emo, Grills, Yon, Mackenzie, and Nicholson.
Thank you. Comments, questions, concerns from the floor, please. A member from Deep River.
Thank you, Warden. Just a quick question around, there's obviously costs associated with the creation of an ad hoc committee, and just wondering where those costs come from, expenses come from.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly, or Chief Nolan.
Warden, we anticipate the costs, the folks on the advisory committee that are not elected will not be compensated by the County of Renfrew, they will be volunteers, if you will, of the committee. The two members as part, two members that are elected to the committee will receive the per DMS per our bylaw for paying chairs and/or participants to committees. So there will be an additional cost to that council line, not anticipated at budget time.
Thank you. Any further comments? Just a general statement, if you don't mind, if you can tolerate my voice one more time. This is a very important step for us, you know, as this has grown, it's necessary, whenever you receive public monies, I believe, that you should have an organizational structure, which, in this instance, as my friend from Amis and Bromley noted this morning, it advises as opposed to governs. I hope we grow to governs down the road, but I think it's very important to provide guidance and oversight, and to report back to this body, which has responsibility for RCV TAC increasingly, and at the same time allows for a healthy development of VTAC going forward. So I'm very, very pleased that we've done this from the ground up, starting in March of 2020, and look where we've come to. So congratulations to everybody, but this is a natural, a natural feature of growing and being innovative. So, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, council from Deep River, and then from Amis and Bromley.
Thank you, Warden. So, I'll move back to the point in time when we created Renfrew County VTAC, and we were always, and it was made very clear, that this was 100% funded program. And there was lots of comments around the fact that healthcare is not, I mean, it's more responsibility, and it should not be funded from the tax, from the property taxpayers of the county. If we are funding this committee from county funds and not from provincial health funds, then that goes away from the whole concept of this program being 100% funded by the province.
Thank you. I'm sorry, question or comment? Comment? Observation? Okay, thank you. Counselor from Amis and Bromley, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Warden. To, certainly to, I wished to address, when I raised my hand, it was to address the initial, and maybe that's still the best approach. I do not, I just opened the approve the final budget. So there is a line item for salary and ad hoc for Warden. So I think certainly it would be contained within that, whether that was estimated. I know in past years, when I'm looking at this, there were times it was over budget, there were times it was under budget. I'm assuming it can be contained within that. There is also the ad hoc per diem payments that have been budgeted. Once again, I don't know if they were estimated based on past experiences, it would seem that probably they are, they have varied from $20,000 to $32,000. But we do have line items that these would be affiliated with, there would be probably also a marginal increase in mileage. So that is in response to the first question of where they would be identified. Certainly, the budget has been laid out, and it is not specific within the ad hoc lines of which ad hoc it would appear on. With respect to the second one, my colleague from Deep River is absolutely correct. There is no question that health, it is somewhat of a gray area as we are, as a municipality funding 50% of paramedic costs. We're funding ostensibly an increasing share of public health costs, so we certainly do enter the health arena through those. With respect to more direct healthcare, there is no arguing with my colleagues' comments. However, I would suggest the same is true of the representation through both the CEO at the Ontario Health Team, I think as well, Chief Nolan is tasked by times with participation in the standing up of same, and so is Mr. Blackmore, and that is certainly outside of the purview. That is engaging in health delivery, and there was a very conscious and very deliberate and very emphatic insertion of the County of Renfrew into those sectors. So the environment is changing, and I think that the points raised by Councilor Doncaster are certainly valid and need to constantly be part in orbit as we are discussing this thing, is what is going to be the exposure, what is the potential for increasing costs to be downloaded, whether we want them or not. These are things certainly to be taking into consideration. But in this instance, I think the very fact of what we desire as a municipal body with respect to the new Ontario Health Teams, and that we must be engaged, I think that this demonstrates as well, our commitment to the same principles that we've been advocating for, is that we are engaging right across the sector to ensure that we are not standing up new silos to take the place of the silos that have long been in existence.
Thank you, thank you. Any further comments, questions? With that, I would call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? There's one, it's carried. Thank you very much, council. With that, we'll move to Community Services Committee, please.
Thank you, Warden. To the council, the corporation of the County of Renfrew, members of County Council, we, your Community Services Committee, wish to report and recommend as follows. Information item number one, Renfrew County Housing Corporation Annual General Meeting. It was held on Wednesday, June 14, and attached as Appendix One is the financial statements and auditor's report for 2022. Item two, Renfrew County Housing Corporation Community Housing Coordinator. At that same meeting, excuse me, the board approved the addition of a community housing coordinator position for a period of up to six months, and this will focus on representing the Renfrew County Housing Corporation, excuse me, at the landlord and tenant tribunals and work on arrears, collection process, and policy. Item three, Renfrew County Risk Watch. County of Renfrew Community Services Department has been participating with this since April 2023, and it brings many human service sectors together to identify individuals who are at an acutely elevated risk of harm and provide coordinated intervention before a crisis occurs. And I understand this has already been quite successful. Bylaws, amendment to bylaw 50-17, County of Renfrew New Licensed Home Agreement. Resolution number CS-CC-23-06-32, moved by Chair, seconded by Committee, that the Community Services Committee recommend to County Council that bylaw number 50-17, authorizing the County of Renfrew to enter internal agreement with licensed home childcare service providers be amended to enter internal agreement with Kate Green of Pembroke. So currently, there are eight homes operating, one home in Arnhem Prior, one in Eaganville, one in Hayley Station, and five homes located in Pembroke. Before I hand this over, I'd like to say that Director Lapine and I attended a Renfrew County District Health Unit meeting yesterday, and we each gave a presentation, I talked on county governance, and Ms. Lapine gave a presentation on what Community Services does. They do so much, but I think it was well received by the people on the board. All of which is respectfully submitted by myself as Chair and committee members, Peter Emo, Debbie Grills, Mr. Mayville, Nicholson, and service. Thank you.
Thank you. And I can report that it was very well received. I think the arc of services and supports that are available through Community Services was quite an eye-opener for members of the board, and it may possibly have been for some of the staff as well. And so I think it was an exercise well undertaken, and well-intentioned, and well-done. So thank you very much for that. And so with that, we'll move to four questions, comments, and concerns. Item number one. Item two. Item, oh, I'm sorry, the member from North Agona Wilberforce.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and through you, Director Lapine. I'm pleased to see that this position has been approved, or has been brought to County Council for approval. I think that having somebody represent the landlord and tenant tribunals, and especially working on their arrears, noticeably, which have certainly escalated through the years where during COVID, they could not be processed. I'm just curious, as those arrears grow, what is the potential for success of recapturing some of that money?
Thank you. Ms. Lapine?
Thank you. And through you, Warden, to council-
Thank you, and through you, Warden, to council. We anticipate that the successful person would have a fairly well put together arrears collection policy in place. We currently, you know, try to collect on arrears as we have quite a few tenants in different communities that have considerable arrears. And our efforts often are successful, but we have some cases that require very intense case management. And our goal is to really work with those particular individuals, partly in tandem with the landlord-tenant tribunal board as well. We don't know exactly what our success rate will be, but it is our intention to bring it back through the board on a regular basis to identify how the arrears is going down. We do have a monthly tracking that we do keep and we'll be able to see very quickly if there's been a reduction. You are correct in your comments. We did see a spike in arrears over the pandemic, partly, as you mentioned, because we could not collect. There were provincial provisions put in place and that prevented us from collecting. And for some people, it's about assisting them to get the other supports that they need. So we will have a report back through the Renfrew County Housing Corporation Board that identifies the arrears collection once we get this rolling and hopefully it's very successful. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions, comments on item two? Seeing none, move to item three. And item number four. The report as a whole? Oh, I'm sorry, councillor from Amis and Bromley.
Thank you very much, Mr. Warden. And this is with respect to the verbal update. Presumably that would be a report that might come forward through a future community services report. But I'm ecstatic that this, it has been a long time coming. The intent to host this meeting dates back quite some time. So I'm very happy that this has happened. And I think, once again, it demonstrates that the health of our community is multi-sectoral and how important these stakeholder engagements are. And I think that it was demonstrated, beginning with the advent of COVID in 2020, how much more robust that engagement is in breaking down some of those barriers. I think that there's significant opportunity to address, in particular, health inequities that exist here. So I'm very much looking forward to a report on that. Thank you.
And Chair.
Yes, you are correct, councillor Donahue. This has been, I understand, quite a while in the making. And you are also correct that it will be reported on in the August meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions, comments, concerns on the report as a whole? With that, I'd ask for a motion, please.
So moved.
You've heard the motion, you've heard the report, you've had some questions. Anything else? Seeing none, I'll call all those in favor? Opposed, none, it's carried, thank you very much. We'll move to operations with a reminder to the Chair that there is an addendum.
You were going to remind me to be brief or something. I would thank the member or the Chair of Community Services for being so efficient with time and giving me a little bit extra time because I'm not sure I'll be that brief. Warden, members of County Council, we, your Operations Committee, wish to report and recommend as follows. Information items, number one, the monthly project status report that can be found attached to appendix one. Item number two, the capital program variance report attached as appendix two. Item number three, the environmental assessment, Highway 60 and County Road 30, Lake Dory Road. We heard a little bit about this this morning from the presentation from MTO. Interesting that we see this. We don't always see the detailed work that MTO does, but certainly lots of information there on some of the options that they are certainly looking at. And I think there was a public meeting held recently to gain some more input as they move forward with that. Item number four, summer operations. And you'll see item A, street sweeping in urban areas. Item B, street sweeping intersections. Item C, maintenance hole and catch basin cleaning. Item D, the pavement markings. And item C, bridge cleaning and inspections. And then move on to resolutions, item number five. McMahon Road Culvert County Structure Assumption Request. Resolution number OPCC 230677, moved by Chair, seconded by Committee, the County Council approved the assumption of the McMahon Road Culvert on McMahon Road 0.18 kilometers east of Fergless Lee Road, township of Amis and Bromley. And further, that the cost for design and construction on McMahon Road Culvert be shared equally between the County of Renfrew and the County of Amis and Bromley. And further, that staff be directed to complete the design for the replacement of the McMahon Road Culvert and present 2023 budget implications at a future meeting. And you'll see the background information there. Item number six, bylaws. PWC 2023-12, County Road 512, Foymont Road Reconstruction. Resolution OPCC 230678, moved by Chair, seconded by Committee. The County Council approved contract PWC 2023-12 as submitted by Bonnershire Excavation Incorporated, BEI, Renfrew, Ontario, for the reconstruction of County Road 512, Foymont Road and County Structure B 257, Harrington Creek Bridge from Rodden Creek to Miller Road, township of Bonnershire Valley in the amount of $6,370,184.09 plus applicable taxes. And further, the County passed a bylaw to authorize the execution of the contract. The background is there. I will note that, I will note two things. One, firstly, you'll notice that this project is significantly higher than what we've budgeted for. But I would point out that the construction of this will span two years. So it will go into 2024 and we'll be able to consider that, well, we'll need to consider that in budget deliberations of 2024. And I would point out that the last paragraph, in fact, the last number that it shows the total project cost in 2023 is approximately $4,605,000. That is a typo, it should be four, did I say six? $4,605,000. $4,605,000 should actually read $4,655,000. Item number seven, County Road 20, Castleford Road Access Agreement. Resolution OPCC 230679, moved by Chair, seconded by Committee. The County Council approved a road access agreement to County Road 20, Castleford Road, township of Horton, between Enin Baker and Dell Baker, Bakker, and the County of Renfrew. And further, the County Council passed a bylaw to authorize execution of the road access agreement. And the background is there. Item number eight, County Road 508, Caliboggy Road Access Agreement. Road Access Agreement, Resolution number OPCC 230680. Moved by Chair, seconded by Committee. The County Council approved a road access agreement to County Road 508, Caliboggy Road, township of Greater Matawaska, between Scott Power and Lindsay Power and the County of Renfrew. And that further County passed a bylaw to authorize the execution of a road access agreement. Both of those last two items are based on sightlines. Item number nine, PWC 2023-05, County Road 508, Caliboggy Road Rehabilitation. Resolution number OPCC 230681. Moved by Chair, seconded by Committee. The County Council approved contract PWC 2023-05 as submitted by Thomas Kavanagh Construction Limited, Ashton, Ontario, for the rehabilitation of County Road 508, Caliboggy Road from Goshen Road to Highway 17, township of McNabb Brayside, in the amount of $1,077,527.42 plus applicable taxes. And from County Road 34, Norton Road to Mill Street, township of Greater Matawaska, in the amount of $940,617.58 plus applicable taxes. And further, the County passed a bylaw to authorize the execution of the contract. And you'll see the background there and the results of the tender process on both of those projects. And also the financial implications. We'll see that one section comes in under budget and the other section is slightly over budget for a total of the two projects of slightly over. Item number 10, PWC 2023-65, County Road 65, Centennial Lake Road. Resolution number OPCC 230682, moved by Chair, seconded by Committee. The County Council approved contract PWC 2023-65 as submitted by McCray Excavation Limited, Pembroke, Ontario, for the rehabilitation of County Road 65, Centennial Lake Road, from Black Donald Public Boat Launch to Civic Address Number 2875, township of Greater Matawaska, in the amount of $531,708.75 plus applicable taxes. And further, the County Council passed a bylaw to authorize the execution of the contract. Background there, the results of the tenders and the fact that this one comes in slightly under budget. Item number 11, PWC 2023-17, County Road 517, Defoe Road Rehabilitation. Resolution number OPCC 230683, moved by Chair, seconded by Committee. The County Council approved contract PWC 2023-17 as submitted by Walsh Contracting and Equipment Rentals, Killaloo, Ontario, for the rehabilitation of County Road 517, Defoe Road, from township line Coolest Road to Sarin Road, township of Matawaska Valley, in the amount of $1,074,039.62 plus applicable taxes. And further, the County Council passed a bylaw to authorize the execution of the contract. The results of the tenders and the financial implications. This one comes in almost $100,000 under budget. Item number 12, PWC 2023-24, County Road 4, Storyland Road Rehabilitation. Resolution OPCC 230684, moved by Chair, seconded by Committee. The County Council approved contract PWC 2023-24 as submitted by Greenwood Paving Pembroke Limited, Pembroke, Ontario, for the rehabilitation of County Road 4, Storyland Road, from Alex Lane to County Road 653, Chanel Road, township of Horton, in the amount of $1,245,192.50 plus applicable taxes. And further, the County Council passed a bylaw to authorize the execution of the contract. The results of the tenders, and this one comes in at $46,000 over budget. Item number 13, PWC 2023-02, Asphalt Patching and Scratch Coat Paving. Resolution number OPCC 230685, moved by Chair, seconded by Committee. The County Council approved contract PWC 2023-02 as submitted by Greenwood Paving Pembroke Limited, Pembroke, Ontario, for asphalt patching and scratch coat paving in the amount of $672,355.70 plus applicable taxes. And further, the County Council passed a bylaw to authorize the execution of the contract. The results of the tender, and this one comes in slightly under budget. And would the Chair want me to do the addendum now also?
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you.
Then we'll run the table.
Okay. Item number 14, Cost Sharing Agreement with Town of Arnhem Prior. Resolution number OPCC 230688, moved by Chair, seconded by Committee. The County Council adopted a bylaw to enter into a cost share agreement with the Town of Arnhem Prior for County Road 2, Daniel Street, Edie Street and Galvin Street intersection realignment. The background is there and I think council will recall previous conversations around the realignment of this intersection. Item number 15, PWC 2023-30, Reconstruction of County Road 30, Lake Dory Road. Resolution OPCC 230690, moved by Chair, seconded by Committee. The County Council approved construction contract PWC 2023-30 as submitted by RGT Clute Construction Limited, Pembroke, Ontario, for the reconstruction of County Road 30, Lake Dory Road, from Highway 60 to Spearburg Road, township of North Agona Wilberforce, in the amount of $2,914,330 plus applicable taxes. And further, the County passed a bylaw to authorize execution of the contract. You'll see the results of the tenders and the fact that this one comes in significantly over budget. Item number 16, Contract Administration for the Reconstruction of County Road 512, Foymont Road. Resolution number OPCC 230691, moved by Chair, seconded by Committee. The County Council approved contract PWC 2023-48 as submitted by BT Engineering Incorporated, Ottawa, Ontario, for contract administration and construction supervision during the reconstruction of County Road 512, Foymont Road, township of Bonnershire Valley, in the amount of $316,647.80 plus applicable taxes. And further, that a bylaw authorizing that the services through a professional agreement be executed. And you'll see the background attached there. Move on to, sorry. Not that one. Item number 17, County Road 512, Foymont Road Widening. Resolution OPCC 230692, moved by Chair, seconded by Committee. The County Council passed a bylaw to acquire the property described as part of Lot 22, Concession 13, Part 6 on Plan 49R-20186 in the geographic township of Sebastopol, township of Bonnershire Valley, from Shum-Rombo for the sum of $7,800. And further, that the property described be dedicated as part of the public highway upon registration of the transfer documents. Just one more piece of the ongoing 512 saga. I'll put it that way. All of which is respectfully submitted by myself as Chair and Committee members Bennett, Eamon, Lynch, Mackenzie, Watt and Wilmer.
Thank you, Chair. And I'll turn council's attention back to the report and ask for any comments, questions or concerns on item number one. Item two. Item three. And again, just to echo the Chair's comments and the comments from the member from North Agona Wilberforce. MTO has certainly taken a very different approach with this. One would say it's an enlightened approach. They've engaged with the public and then bringing and sharing all of the possible options with us has been unusual in my time in these chambers. And so we certainly appreciate that and it'll get us to a better result and a more accepted result. Item number four. All of these sections, A, B, C, D, E. I'll move to item five. And I have the member from Whitewater Region and Amis and Bromley.
Thank you, Chair. I think it's a great opportunity for us to do this assumption request. The question I had was specific to the policy and maybe it's just a newbie perspective. But when we assume a road, it's brought up to county standard before it's assumed. But culverts are split 50%. And I was just wondering if staff can offer any insight why it's different for these kinds of structures versus roads?
I'll start with Mr. Perkins and then move to the member from Amis and Bromley.
Thank you, Chair, and through you to councillor Nicholson. Actually, I don't really have a response for that because the bridge policy was in place for quite a number of years. And we only recently developed our new road rationalization policy. So the road rationalization policy, as you know, says to bring it up to 70%. But under the bridge policy, it was a 50% share. If they found a structure that was over 3- If they found a structure that was over three meters, if it's under three meters and you as a municipality bring it up to over three meters, then it's at your cost. But if it's a, I'm sure there are structures all over the county that have not been accounted for yet that may be over three meters that I'm sure we'll find as we go forward.
Thank you. And I'll move to the member from Admaster Bromley.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My comment was just to sever from the report and consider separately, please.
Okay, thank you. So I don't need a vote on that, it's just a request, that's my recollection, thank you. And with that, we'll move to item number six. Item, oh, I'm sorry, a councillor or a member from Admaster Bromley.
Thank you very much, once again, Mr. Warden. I just wanted to comment on the first paragraph at the top of page 74. Within the report, it does describe that this will put significant additional pressure on the long-term financial plan and it would express that probably it's fraught to engage too deeply on a single project within a single department on what the long-term financial plan implications are. I think one of the things to take into consideration is that there are multiple avenues that we're going to be looking at. One of the things that I would suggest and certainly was foremost in my mind when we engaged on our budget deliberations in February, that I think something in the order of $840,000 is what we have budgeted for interest to be earned this year. And without knowing the specific numbers, that I relied on, that I recognize that our ratepayers are now experiencing substantial costs of borrowing, servicing costs, mortgages, et cetera. But the fact that we have substantial holdings here and in fact substantial holdings even within the Renfrew area administrators group, I'm going to venture to say, speculate, and I'm not going to ask the Treasurer to comment on this simply because it is speculative and I would not anticipate that that would be appropriate for them to do, but I'm going to guess that at the current interest rates, we probably hit that by Easter, the $850,000. Just drawing to Council's attention that last year we had budgeted the same $650,000 and I think it was about 2.2 million in interest earned and interest has jumped even in 2023. So there are many parameters that impact the long-term financial plan and I don't dispute what is said here, but I would suggest is one project within one department, it is problematic to put too much weight onto what impact that would be.
Thank you. And I think at the end of the day, when this project is complete, you know, this might be a project to sit down and have an internal team take a look at the lessons learned because it's been such a complex project for no good reason other than we have too many partners that we have to work with in terms of the utilities and then also to the realignment. So, you know, at some, I think it's a good project not to suggest anything was wrong, but to try and understand if there's a way of developing a quicker or more refined critical path forward. And so that's something, you know, we can talk about in the future. A member from Bonnisher Valley, please.
Very quickly, Warden, just thank you to everybody that, I don't know, finally, as Counselor Doncaster said, maybe we're getting to the end of the saga of Highway 512. I totally agree with you, Warden, that this is a business case for how to start and finish a reconstruction where there is such severe realignment between the utilities and even purchasing property has been a struggle. So I just, I'm just glad that County Council hung in there. Thank you so much. It was a big day for Bonnisher Valley, apparently. Thank you.
Wait till August, you're not going to be as happy. A councillor or a member from Admaster Bromley.
Thank you very much, Mr. Warden. It had unfortunately slipped my mind, I want to thank my colleague from Bonnisher Valley for twigging my memory. In the presentation for MTO this morning, it was, while it may not have been directly and emphatically underscored, certainly the inference was that MTO seemingly are experiencing challenges with some of the utility partners with respect to relocation of services. And I think that that might be something that would be worth our engaging with the province on. We are required to provide our rights of way for utilities, perhaps that should be revisited with respect to meeting obligations, given that these are municipal or in the instance of MTO provincial assets. And I think that that conversation might be warranted to be initiated, perhaps through AMO.
I can assure you that it will be and it has been. When we met with Minister Clark and the Premier in January of 2021 to talk about their housing task force, the one that had all the developers and know people with experience in building, we did mention that that was a problem for us. We talked about them being quite predatory and difficult to deal with. We were assured we'd have a further conversation and I haven't pursued it with the Premier or the Minister, but I have pursued it internally with AMO and we've talked about it aroma. So we are dragging it forward and I wrote down this morning as soon as Darren said that, to be able to get more information from him because in these conversations, you just need leverage. And so we'll push it forward slowly because that's how it goes. Thank you. Any further comments? All right, next, we'll move on to item number seven. Item number eight. Item nine. Item number 11. Item number 12. Item 13. Item 14. So glad to see the project moving forward and I think the model works for us and Armpryor and has worked in the past with other municipalities. So I think this is, you know, something going forward that's a good business practice for us and I'm glad to see it continuing. Item number 15. Item number 16. Item number seven. The report as a whole. I'm sorry? Yeah, yeah. And so if I could have a mover to move this report with the exception of item number five?
So moved.
Thank you. Any further comments, questions, concerns? All those in favor? Opposed, none is carried? Thank you. And with that, item number five, you've heard the report. Any further comments, questions, concerns? A member from Admaster Bromley, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I certainly recognize that the policy is in place and in fact cognizant of the query by my colleague from Whitewater, one of the things that I am wondering about is, is it anticipated that there's going to be prorating of lifespan of culverts? Because ultimately, this one, there is no question. As part of the report, clearly it is making known that it is in a poor state of repair, there is an emergency replacement required. If in fact, we had determined that this was meeting the county's measurements and it approached the county two years ago, would there have been any cost to have transferred this to the County of Renfrew? If in fact, these are discovered prior to, and you can be assured that I've had a conversation with my road super that maybe we should take our tape lines out and with a little bit more precision, ensure that we know precisely what are the dimensions of our culverts are before they come into a state of disrepair. Certainly with respect to roads, there is a different analysis, i.e. it is difficult to measure the degradation and I think that certainly we have before us the different usage, the different standard on a particular road, Campbell Drive, that has been part of our conversations moving forward. But I'm going to come back to the question that I had asked, if in fact, simply through an investigation of the current state, steady state of our culverts had determined that this was in fact meeting the threshold for a county structure two years ago, I'm going to guess that there would have been no cost for the replacement that is now before us. So it seems like that there is a gap there and I anticipate that perhaps at the conclusion of today's meetings, perhaps even on Bluetooth on the way home, each member present might be on discussion with their road supervisor saying, perhaps it's in our interest to measure all of our structures now so that we know prior to them being into a failed state or a failing state. In any event, I think that that's a significant gap in the policy that right now, there is no question that there's going to be a cost assigned to this. If in fact, this had been transferred two years ago, there was going to be a cost assigned to us, but I suggest that it was improbable that there would be then an effort to have Admaster Bromley pick up the half. So with that, Mr. Warden, I would, I'm going to move, it is contained within item five. Council will note that the recommendation is based on item A, I think, or option A. So I am going to move that it be amended such that the recommendation incorporate option C rather than option A, recognizing that it only became apparent to us in Admaster Bromley that this structure was of a size that met the standard for the county.
Thank you. So you've made that motion for an amendment? Is there a second or for that? I'm going to, I'll ask three times just to be clear. Is there a second or for the motion? Is there a second or for the motion on the floor? Seeing none, we will not be entertaining the motion, thank you. I'm sorry, a member?
I do see everybody reaching for their cell phones, mind you.
Okay, thank you. So with that, we'll go back to the recommendation and report and again, just to be clear, are you suggesting that committee should, in its deliberations in the future, take a look at the idea of prorating the existing life left on a structure prior to transfer?
What I would suggest, Mr. Warden, I don't, I have not pursued it through. What I would suggest is that an equity lens be applied to this. I think that the gap that I've identified is a real gap. It is not, it is not a surprise to me that my motion did not get a second or, because we have talked on numerous occasions about this very thing. However, this is definitely a gap and without the tongue firmly planted in cheek, I expect that each of us sitting in this room will have a very careful conversation on having a complete and thorough understanding of our inventories.
Thank you. So having heard the conversation, I'm sure the Chair and the Director will talk more about it. And so with that, I see the member from Whitewater.
Yeah. Thank you, Chair. Great discussion on it. And I would also ask, ask if, could be considered by Operations Committee, if they're going to relook at the policy, maybe it's, we just select a date, as of today, you own the culvert regardless of size and really we're only addressing changes in hydrology. Should it need to go greater than three meters, then it would be revised, but as the culverts stand now is as they stand. And they have had, they've existed like this for a number of years and that's where the cookie crumbles.
Okay, thank you. And so with that, and having no further hands in the air, we can move to, oh, I'm sorry, a member from Admaster Bromley.
Just one now, it was not a motion, it was a suggestion, I believe, and I can take it as such. And if I understood it correctly, if in fact that is to be some direction to staff, if I could suggest an amendment that it be as of yesterday? Not as of today?
Thank you. So we'll have an interesting discussion in operations, I'm sure. And so with that, I'd like to call a vote on item five. Although, I'm sorry, councillor from Town of Armpryor?
Thank you, Warden. Just another comment on that, we have an engineer now that's going to be doing our culverts, so we should be in fact saving money on this. They don't do dams, but they're going to be doing the culvert. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So very quickly, all those in favor? Opposed, none, it's carried? Oh, I'm sorry, opposed, one, sorry.
I have a news.
Yes, you do. Yes, you do. We'll have that poster ready for you. Thank you very much, it's carried. And so with that, we'll move to Development and Property Committee, please, the Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. To the Council of the Corporation of the County of Renfrew, members of County Council, we, your Development and Property Committee, wish to report and recommend as follows. Information, item number one is the residential market activity and the summary sheet has been attached and it also indicates a comparable five-year average. Item number two is the Ottawa Valley Tourist Association Board and the election of new officers. And the new Board of Directors elected Lauren Echelpatrick of Helsonia as Chair and Megan James of Somewhere in Calabogie as Vice Chair for the 2023-24 term. Item number three is 2023 Summer Company Participants and this year we have five participants enrolled for the season and they include Daniel Palmeri 3D Directions from Chalk River, Grace Sting Astors Boutique in Deep River, Arden Miller, Arden Miller Studios, Chalk River, Amber Gilchrist Charms and Trinkets Pembroke and Logan Stewart Viking Metal Works from Eaganville. And a little bit of background is included. Item number four is a Forest Stewardship Council Internal Monitoring Audit. And this is an independent audit that is done on our woodlots through the Eastern Ontario Model Forest and is, was carried out on the Beachburg and Perscheck tracks to assess harvest activities and pesticide use. Item number five is, and this is, there's a, there's an error there in the printing, it should say that it's the Sustainable Forestry Initiative and not the Forest Stewardship Council. And this is a certification trial with the Sustainable Forestry Initiative. And this has come about because the Forest Stewardship Council has introduced some new criteria, administration and monitoring standards that would require additional staff in order to meet those new recommendations or new requirements. So this certification trial is an opportunity to work with the Sustainable Forestry Initiative, which is a similar certification process, but not nearly as resource intensive. Item number six is regarding planning activity. And once again, during the period, the Planning Division opened 96 new severance applications, approved 91, and so far, the County of Renfrew received 234 applications and approval and have approved 184. Item number seven is planning application refunds and the mandatory preconsultation. And once again, County of Renfrew staff reached out to local municipalities to provide local planning services to start implementing the changes to address Bill 109, the More Homes For Everyone Act 2022 and Build 23, More Homes Built Faster Act 2022. And these are to help the local municipalities process their planning applications in order to meet the new timeframes under the Planning Act. Item number eight is a policy review, a place to grow and provincial policy statement and the extension that the province has provided for comments. Moving to resolutions, item number nine is Business Case Real Estate Division Resolution Number DP-CC-230671, moved by Chair, seconded by Committee. The County Council approved the transition of the Building Infrastructure Coordinator within the Real Estate Division of the Development and Property Department from a one-year contract to full-time permanent position in Group 6, excuse me, 3683 to 4145 of the Salary Grid and Employment Bylaw Number 1 with benefits. And the business case background is attached. Moving to bylaws, item number 10, the lease agreement at 80 McGonigal Street in Armpryor. Resolution Number DP-CC-230673, moved by Chair, seconded by Committee. County Council passed a bylaw to enter into a lease agreement for a two-year period commencing August 1st, 2023 with the Armpryor Regional Health for office space at 80 McGonigal Street, Armpryor, Ontario. The background is there as well as a diagram of the new location and the space that will The background is there as well as a diagram of the new location and the space that will be occupied. Item number 11 is regarding the O'Brien Flat Road, flat roof, flat roof replacement and the HVAC system. Resolution number DP dash CC dash 23-0674, moved by Chair, seconded by committee. That county council approved contract RE dash 2023 dash 09 dash RP as submitted by IRVCON Limited Pembroke, Ontario for a flat roof overlay up to 32,000 square feet and the replacement of two HVAC systems at Renfro County Place, 450 O'Brien Road in the amount of $329,224 plus applicable taxes. And further, that county council pass a bylaw to authorize execution of the contract. Again, the, the submitted bids have been attached for your review and IRVCON did come in lows. Item number 12 is the tariff of fees for the planning division in resolution number DP dash CC dash 23-0675, moved by Chair, seconded by committee. That county council pass an updated tariff of fees bylaw for applications made in respect of planning matters and further that bylaw 17 dash 22 be repealed. Again, the background is there regarding some of the changes and some of the requirements to meet the, the provincial changes. Item number 13 is the delegated authority consent agreements, resolution number DP dash CC dash 23 dash 06 dash 76, moved by Chair, seconded by committee. The county council adopt a bylaw to delegate the authority to the manager of the planning services to enter into consent agreements. Once again, the background and the reasoning is attached and it is in an attempt to try and expediate and create more efficiency in some of the planning applications. All of which is respectfully submitted by myself as Chair and committee members Bennett, Eamon, Lynch, McKenzie, Service, Watt, and Weir. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. And with that, we'll move back through the report, comments, questions, concerns from members of council. With regards to item number one, item two. Item three, big fan of summer company, glad to see that we have five very willing students who are managing their own businesses this summer, starting them, imagine them, it's always a, there are always great stories, we'll try to get the stories in here for you. Item number four. Item five. Item six, and we have Mr. Howarth in the back if we had, need additional information. And the member from Whitewater, please.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I just wanted to highlight 96 new severance applications and approved 91. That's, that's good news. Now, I'm not sure the municipalities actually use the planning division to, to process this. I imagine that's, I'm getting nods around the head, so I, I think that's a very good news story. And I noticed later on, it just talks about contracting services to assist in planning reports. Again, a great initiative. I'm just, just wondering if there's any other comments could highlight, what are the obstacles that they haven't been able to resolve yet? What's on the list that still needs to be tackled in order to, to, you know, make our planning activities the most efficient and effective possible?
Okay, we'll start with Mr. Davis, please.
Thank you, Warden, and through you. So just to be clear on some of the numbers you mentioned, we do have a backlog, to be clear. So of the applications we've received, those 91s we've, we've approved are not the same. There's overlap. Secondly, our biggest, I guess, concern, our biggest issue that we have in the planning services field is staffing. Yes, we've hired a contract person to meet some needs, but we still have a vacant position currently. And to, to say we're having an issue trying to fill that vacant position is an understatement. There's other municipalities here around this table are, are facing the same issues. And if we could resolve that issue of the vacancies, we would, probably we would improve our performance in the manager, the matter of processing these applications. But I'll leave it at that in the sense of our issues is, is staffing. Thank you.
Thank you. And further comment?
Yeah, just that, to your point, the, having planning services in Bonshire Valley has been invaluable. It's the best service we could have asked for. Our client, our residents love it and I encourage, if we can find more staff, that everybody take advantage of this. Thanks.
Thank you. And that was the member from Bonshire Valley. And so with that, we'll move on to the next item, which is item number seven. Item number eight. Item nine. Item 10. You know, that, that structure at McGonigal is a county, county building and I'm glad to see, you know, I think it's a trend of the future, various times we're going to be repurposing our, our, our buildings with different tendencies, whether they're institutional or private or divisions of our own, our own corporation. So I'm glad to see this. Thank you. Item number 11. Item 12. And that was it. The report as a whole. Could I have a mover, please?
So moved, Mr. Warden. That was easy.
Thank you, thank you. And you've heard the report. Any further comments, questions, or concerns? All right, with that, we'll call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed, opposed, none is carried. So I'd like to suggest we'll take a break till 3:05. I recognize you've been sitting here for nearly two hours and I appreciate your patience, but I understand that there is a limit to that. So thank you.
And with that, we will move to the Health Committee with a reminder there is an addendum. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. To the council of the corporation of the County of Renfrew, members of County Council, we, your Health Committee, wish to report and recommend as follows, beginning with information items. Item number one is the Medical Priority Dispatch System. This is a significant leap forward in the provision of emergent care in Ontario. It is allowing it to be much more targeted, much more precision. I just unfortunately, perhaps if there are any questions following, at Health Committee, it was reported, I have not had time to go back and pull those numbers up. As you might imagine, the vast majority of 911 calls, this is our urgent emergency situations that require the ambulance with lights and sirens. And in fact, on presentation typically, it is less than 25% that actually are of that nature. So certainly, this is one of the things, one of the tools that will make a significant impact in the right service at the right time in the right place, which has been often the driving force for the paramedic service and in fact, many more. Item two is the Paramedic Chiefs of Canada Award of Excellence. And once again, very proud to report that RCV-TAC has been selected as this year's winner of the Award of Excellence. Item three is the Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus, the partial refresh of the 2019 Paramedic Services Situation Overview, and that certainly was part of the delegation this morning from the Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus. Ms. Staveley-Watson had underscored the Apex Pro Consulting Report. Marvin Rubenstein, Rubenstein is the author of that and significant updating of the information of that, and it is showing the challenges. And as the caucus has identified, the priorities are the main drivers of what we are seeing in the dramatic increase of the utilization of the paramedic services. Item four, Mr. Chair, Bonnershire Manor and Miramichi Lodge Quality Improvement and Safety Plan Progress Reports. And this is not simply for the more recent members of County Council, but this had been an annual reporting that had been done, but consistent with the accreditation process that is now underway. That was one of the things in an early survey that was identified, is that there should be more regular reporting on the continuous quality improvement being reported to the governance body. Moving on then, Mr. Warden, to Resolutions. Item five is the Multi-Sector Service Accountability Agreement and Schedule F Form of Compliance Declaration. Resolution number H-CC-23-06-68, moved by myself, seconded by committee, that County Council authorize the warden and chief administrative officer clerk to sign Schedule F Declaration of Compliance issued pursuant to the Multi-Sector Service Accountability Agreement for County of Renfrew Bonnershire Manor Senior Adult Day Program, and the background, Mr. Chair, is attached. Item six is the Bonnershire Manor Roofing Request for Tender, Resolution Number H-CC-23-06-69, moved by myself, seconded by committee, that County Council award the request for tender BM-2023-01 Flat Roof Replacement Project for a section of roofing at Bonnershire Manor to Perth Roofing from Perth, Ontario for Roof C, No Taper, at the quoted price of $258,000, inclusive of HST, as approved in the Bonnershire Manor 2023 capital budget. And once again, Mr. Chair, the background is attached. Item seven is the Miramichi Lodge Generator Project, Resolution Number H-CC-23-06-70, moved by myself, seconded by committee, that County Council approve reallocation of Miramichi Lodge capital funds to cover the unanticipated replacement of four chiller relief valves at a cost of $15,000, as well as repairs to the emergency generator at a cost of $14,000. Staff is requesting that the 2023 flooring budget be reduced from $50,000 to $21,000 to cover this unanticipated expenditure. Once again, the background is attached. Item eight, the Paramedic Service Delivery Cross-Border Billing and Dispatch, Resolution Number H-CC-23-06-73, moved by myself, seconded by committee, that County Council approve that the County of Renfrew join a working group of neighboring municipalities to address the issue of cross-border paramedic billing and other systemic issues, and likewise, the background, Mr. Warden, is attached. Bylaws, number nine, Contract 211 Ontario, Resolution Number H-CC-23-06-66, moved by myself, seconded by committee, that County Council adopt a bylaw authorizing the warden and CAO clerk to sign a contract with 211 Ontario to provide 211 contact center telephony system access to support the Renfrew County Virtual Triage Assessment Center team. The background, Mr. Chair, is attached, and of course, this is part and parcel of the transfer of the administration of VTAC from Arnhem Prior Regional Health to the County of Renfrew. Moving on to the addendum then, that was sent out earlier today to everyone in a digital form, the addendum to the Health Committee, we are returning back to resolutions. Item 10 is the Sierra Team Marine Capability Purchase of Rescue Watercraft, Resolution Number H-CC-23-06-81, moved by myself, seconded by committee, that County Council approve the reallocation of paramedic service capital funds to cover the purchase of a SuperDAX Survivor 1800 rescue watercraft, I feel like I'm on an infomercial, at a cost of $11,500 and deferring the purchase of a paramedic all-terrain vehicle, and the background in support of this reallocation. Once again, Mr. Chair is attached. Item 11 is the Paramedic Service Leadership Restructuring Proposal, Resolution Number H-CC-23-06-78, moved by myself, seconded by committee, that County Council approve the attached business case to support the County of Renfrew Paramedic Service Leadership Restructuring Proposal to include and address the services related to the community programs that are funded through our agreements with the Province of Ontario for the provision of RCV-TAC and community programs. Again, the background is attached, and again, this is part and parcel, Mr. Chair, of the evolution of the paramedic service from what I have often referred to as the legacy or traditional urgent response, the 911 response, if you will, to the much more broader application with respect to community paramedicine. Bylaws, moving on to item 12, Mr. Warden, Bonnershire Manor QP Local 1508 and Miramichi Lodge QP Local 3586 Collective Agreement Ratification, Resolution Number H-CC-23-06-76, moved by Chair, seconded by committee, that County Council adopt Employment Bylaw Number Two, a bylaw to amend Bylaw 14-18, the collective agreement with the Canadian Union of Public Employees Local 1508 Bonnershire Manor for a collective agreement effective for a three-year contract for the period January 1, 2023, to and including December 31, 2025, I beg your pardon. Resolution, the companion resolution, number H-CC-23-06-77, moved by myself, seconded by committee, that County Council adopt Employment Bylaw Number Five, a bylaw to amend Bylaw 94-18, the collective agreement with the Canadian Union of Public Employees Local 3586 Miramichi Lodge for a collective agreement effective for a three-year contract for the period January 1, 2023, to and including December 31, 2025. Once again, the background is attached. I wish to commend Mr. Blackmore, and I'm quite certain Mr. Bellmore, and all those staff that were participants in this, these two collective agreements, that they are now aligned as well, is, I think, outstanding. Moving on to item 13, Mr. Warden, RCV-TAC Transfer Payment Agreement, Resolution Number H-CC-23-06-82, moved by myself, seconded by committee, that County Council adopt a bylaw authorizing the warden and CAO clerk to sign an agreement between the County of Renfrew and Ontario Health for funding to support the Renfrew County Virtual Triage and Assessment Center for the term April 1, 2023, and ending on March 31, 2024, the fiscal year. And as with all other items, Mr. Warden, the background is attached. All of which is respectfully submitted by myself as Chair, along with committee members, Emo Grylls, Jan Murphy, Nicholson, Weir, and Wilmer.
Thank you, Chair. And to council, we'll move through the report, item by item. And do you have any comments, questions, and concerns, please raise them. For item number one, the Medical Priority Dispatch System. Item number two. Item three, as always, item two, we're, you know, it's a testament to the efforts of our chief and to his management team, but I think more specifically, you know, he would, he is in agreement that our staff are extraordinary, and the support that they receive from the corporation, and also their own admin team allows them to put themselves in places where we receive recognition or rewards, awards on a regular basis. So again, thank you to them for demonstrating innovation, quality service, and caring for our community. We certainly appreciate that. Item number three, this is a report you really, if you have time, take a boo at, take a look at, and mulled it over the summer. It's a, it's a great report about 11 o'clock at night, when you're contemplating life. There are some significant findings in there. There, you know, it lets us know about our service levels today, it lets us know what we're going to need, and it talks about future investments. Yes, member from Edmonton.
I think everyone would find that very edifying, beach reading as well, Mr. Warden.
I'm sorry?
I think everyone would find that very edifying, beach reading as well, over the summer.
Yes, yes. So it's, I hope everybody has an opportunity to take a look at, because it's going to define, or at least assist us in strategizing how we're going to meet the increased volume needs that we're going to face over the next 10 years. Number four, please. And the councillor from North of Gona, Wilberforce. I broke my glasses, so I have my old ones on, so if you see me dipping down, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Actually, it's in regards to item number three. Just curious, and since we have Chief Nolan here, moving forward, I'm curious whether he's, I'm sure he probably is experiencing the same challenges, meeting staffing levels that we're faced in our long-term care with PSWs, but how is Renfrew County doing as far as maintaining a full complement of staff?
Chief Nolan, please.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, through you to the councillor. Currently, our staffing levels are actually quite stable, especially in comparison to peer municipalities. We continue to have more applicants than we have positions for. We are onboarding new recruits this week, actually, as we speak, and we're in a, I'd say, a bit of a precarious situation, knowing that the City of Ottawa has recently approved 120 new staff to their paramedic service over the next three years. So I think our eye in terms of overall recruitment and retention needs to help us refocus in terms of supporting the staff that we have, keeping them here. As you're also aware, we're adding two 12-hour units beginning next week on the 911 side of the House, so that adds an additional complexity in terms of the available number of shifts in total. But our staffing on the road has been relatively stable to date. We also, paramedics work in the emergency departments and the VTAC assessment centers and so on, so we have some capacity to move people around, depending on availability, of course. We're coming into the difficult season, where everybody wants to be on vacation, so we'll continue to monitor that situation, but we remain an employer of choice. And I think it's, you know, some of the innovation, some of the opportunities, and the community that we live in that keep people wanting to work in Renfrew County, so we're going to keep leveraging that.
Thank you. And seeing that, we'll move to item number four. And again, I'm sure the Chair will echo this, and the CAO, we had a very good session with the accreditation folks yesterday. Great comments, and really nice, relaxed back and forth on a series of questions, and she worked hard to make sure she received an accurate answer from us, because I, on occasion, will drift off on a tangent, thinking it's important, but she brought me back on task, and that was, and of course, the Chair was on point. on task, and that was, and of course, the Chair was on point as usual, so, thank you. And so with that, we'll move to resolutions. Number five. Number six. Item number seven. Item number eight. Now, I will speak to this, we, we did meet, and it became apparent that we're going to have to meet again, it wasn't a one-off, so that's why this resolution came forward. We did speak quite extensively, thank you to Chief Nolan for bringing up the MPDS dispatch and the whole that is going to occur as we go on early next year. Kingston was not included in it. So we have a letter going to Ottawa to talk about our concerns and opportunities with them. And then also, we, I was tasked with meeting with the Mayor of Ottawa, Mark Sutcliffe, and I've made, we have had a couple telephone conversations, so we are meeting in August, just to start the language and dialogue between us, because we have a lot of things that we can work together on. And I've had a brief conversation with Brian Patterson, the Mayor of Kingston, to have a conversation with him about MPDS and the importance of it, and getting, you know, their support and, and might. So those two mayors have a lot of influence across, across the big mayor, large mayor caucus, and in their, in the respective caucus of AMO as well. So we, Brian's a great guy to work with, every confidence that, you know, he'll be helpful, so I'll keep you up to date, but that's, that's where we're headed with it. And we'll, we will circulate the letter in the August report that we send to Ottawa. Number nine, please. And then we'll move to number 10. I'm sorry, councillor from town of Pedawaba.
Thank you, Warden, through you. I just think this is a fantastic idea to provide this resource for our paramedic team. We know here in Renfrew County, we have a lot of waterways that are used by a tremendous number of people, both for work and for recreation, as well as all the tourists that come here to use our waterways. My question is, just in terms of training to use this watercraft, would it just be the Sierra Team, or would all members of the paramedic team be trained to operate this resource?
Chief Nolan, please.
Great, thank you, Mr. Warden, through you to councillor. The intention is that the Sierra Team will be the operators of the unit, and will be doing that in support of our frontline 911 crews. Currently, our, our stance, depending on the situations that arise, is that our 911, where there's an issue that's been reported through 911, the closest available 911 paramedics will respond. And as has been the case in the past, then they go looking for assets, waiting for assets, like literally begging and borrowing, I won't say stealing, but begging, borrowing for assets to be able to get nearer to the patient, only in circumstances where it's safe. And you can imagine how ad hoc all of that is, when it's not a standard part of our deployment. Not dissimilar to the addition of the side-by-sides or UTVs many years ago. We now know that paramedics, our paramedics, being in marine environment is, is not an uncommon circumstance. In fact, we've already had six days in the last 30 days where our paramedics have been on the water in other people's boats, simply to be able to do their own job. And in very complex situations, both from an interoperability perspective, but also clinically in terms of, is, just because it's a boat, is it a boat that you can easily get someone with gear on out of the water and into the boat, for example? So the Sierra Team will be, as in all cases, supporting the 911 side of the house with the expertise of the operation of the boat, and if they happen to be closest available, then they would be able to lean into that with a dynamic risk assessment on a case-by-case basis.
Thank you. And we'll move to, oh, I'm sorry, a member from Bonneville Valley.
Sorry, Mr. Warden, I just wanted to add that in our special meeting of health today, I did ask the question, would this resource be available for our local tier fire departments that do not have water rescue? And I was assured that yes, if it was available, it would be deployed if, if so needed for those fire departments that are on shore looking for somebody with a boat. Thank you.
Thank you. And the member from Deep River, and did I miss any other hands?
Just curious as to what the implications are at the midpoint of the Ottawa River, where the Province of Ontario changes to the Province of Quebec.
Thank you. Chief Nolan, please.
Yeah, thanks, thank you, Mr. Warden, and to the councillor, great question, and always an interesting situation, because the Province of Ontario does have an agreement in place with the Province of Quebec. So as you know, from Rapid de Jochim, we are the primary response agency into Quebec for issues of life safety. So responding into Quebec is not a foreign concept in terms of our operation. It gets a little bit further complicated at the clinical level, in terms of pronouncement of death between one province and the next, for example. We've, we've had some pretty interesting conversations with their medical society. But in terms of our operating in that space, and, and to pick up a little bit on councillor Murphy's point, you know, our, our interest is in taking care of people. So really, we're not interested in towing other people's boats around, and, you know, those types of, of situations. But where there's a person that is in or adjacent to our response areas, such as Algonquin Park, such as Hastings County, the City of Ottawa, and so on, our expectation is that we'll take care of the people first and sort out some of the, the logistics, or even the funding opportunities that might exist by responding into other jurisdictions secondarily.
Okay, thank you. And councillor, our member from Abbott's New Bromley.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, through you. What was the, what was the name of the place at the upper end of the range, Chief Nolan?
Rapid de Jochim?
Never heard of that? Oh, the Swishaw.
Swishaw.
Ah, okay, for those tuned in, watching, it is the Swishaw.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I got a drubbing last week from councillor Murphy over telephony, so I thought I'd go with the proper name on that one, thanks.
Thank you very much. Learned something new today, and, and which is not uncommon. So with that, we'll move to item number 11, and the restructuring proposal. And again, just to reassure, this is a normal progression when a, when a corporation evolves, especially one that's innovative, and, and develops functions that weren't, that weren't considered when job descriptions might have been, been written 10 years ago. So congratulations for bringing forward this, this restructuring proposal, which meets our needs today and likely for the next few years, and I thank you for that. Item number 12. And again, just to add, congratulations, this is a very good news settlement with both of our, with both of our unions. The, you know, the wage, the wage implications are manageable, and the, the benefits, you know, the benefit cost, additional benefit cost is phased in, which is always very helpful. And so congratulations to you and to the two, to the two locals who took part in it to get to this successful resolution. And number 13, RC VTAC Transfer Payment Agreement. The report as a whole, could I have a mover, please?
So moved, Mr. Warden.
Thank you. You've heard the report, you've heard the questions, you've heard the answers. All those in favor? Opposed? None is carried? Thank you very much, council. And we'll move to Finance and Admin, please.
Thank you, Warden. To the council of the Corporation of the County of Renfrew, members of County Council, we, your Finance and Administration Committee wish to report and recommend as follows. Number one is our Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus 2023 Strategic Priorities, which we heard from Meredith this morning. Number two is the Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus Treasurers Meeting. And because our warden is the Chair, Mr. Foss becomes the Chair of the Treasurers Group. Our warden is the gift that keeps on giving for our staff. Number three are the two career fairs that took place. Number four is the POA Prosecutor Update. There's a lot of stuff there. Number five is the POA Administration MCMA Conference Update, which Amanda, no, sorry, Ashley Wilton attended, under resolutions. Number six, Canoe Procurement Group of Canada. Resolution number FACC 23-06-59, moved by the Chair, seconded by Committee. The County Council authorized staff to join the Canoe Procurement Group of Canada LAS Group Procurement Programme, effective July 1, 2023, to take advantage of public sector group purchasing opportunities when it is beneficial for the County of Renfrew to do so. And the background is there. And we move to number seven, delegation of authority. Resolution number FACC 23-06-60, moved by the Chair, seconded by Committee. The County Council approved that the Chief Administrator, Administrative Officer Clerk be given delegated authority for the month of July to approve consultant appointments and contract awards that would normally require committee and/or council approval. This approval is contingent on the appointments, contracts, awards being within the approved funding allocations, and that there are no irregularities associated with the procurement process. Number eight, from this morning, our 2022 Draft Audited Statements. Resolution number FACC 23-06-62, moved by the Chair, seconded by Committee. The County Council approved the draft audited statements for the County of Renfrew for the year ended December 31, 2022. Under bylaws, Employment Bylaw Number One for County Officers and Staff. Resolution number FACC 23-06-63, moved by the Chair, seconded by Committee. The County Council approved the following changes to the non-union staff salary grid within Employment Bylaw Number One. One, removal of all the following positions. COVID-19 screener and visit facilitator in Group One. COVID screener and coordinator in Group Three. Trails coordinator in Group Three. Forestry and trails technician in Group Six. GIS technician in Group Six. Manager forestry and GIS in Group Nine. Number two, creation of the following positions. Forestry technician in Group Five. GIS technician, planning technician in Group Five. Civil designer in Group Six. GIS coordinator in Group Six. Trails coordinator in Group Six. Community housing, housing coordinator in Group Six. Number three, renaming of the following positions. Capital projects administrator in Group Six to build infrastructure coordinator in Group Six. Manager infrastructure in Group Eleven to manager capital works in Group Eleven. And further, that the revised employment bylaw number one be adopted, and the background is there. And just for housekeeping purposes in the bylaw, economic development specialist in Number Three should reprogram officer. And in Number Four, economic development and entrepreneurship coordinator is now economic development coordinator. Those are just housekeeping items from last year. And all the background are there, all of which is respectfully submitted by myself as Chair and Committee members, Bros, Don Caster, Dunning Hugh Eamon, Giardini, Jan, and Mayville. Thank you, Warden.
Thank you very much. And with that, back to council. Questions, comments, concerns on this, on the report? Item number one. Item number two. And again, thank you to Mr. Foss for taking this on. We'll certainly see that it's highlighted in your resume, should you pursue a consultant's career down the road. Number three, career fairs. And again, glad to see the bottom sentence, what says it's tied to our strategic plan goal number two, workforce development. You know, we took a lot of time to develop the strategic plan, so it's nice when it's noted that we're following it, so thank you for that. Item number four, the Provincial Offences Prosecu-, I'm sorry, a member from Armpour.
Number four, Chair.
Okay, perfect. So item number four.
Yes, to the Treasurer, it's paragraph two, we have 500 charges that we're going to dispose of. Could you give me an estimate of how much that would be in the way of funds?
Certainly.
Thank you, Warden, and through you. The charges, the average, we, we don't recognize revenue within the Provincial Offences Court when the charges are laid. We only recognize revenue at the time where the, the charge has been agreed to and entered. So what we have done is estimated that, on average, over the first five months of the year, our Highway Traffic Act's charges result in payments of approximately $150 per charge. So those 500 charges would represent roughly $75,000.
Supplementary?
Thank you, Warden. Those $75,000 are county dollars, correct?
Through you, Warden, yes. Under the Memorandum of Understanding that we have at the Province, we're responsible for all expenses within the Provincial Offences Courts, but all ticket and fine revenue does also come to the County of Renfrew, correct?
And supplementary?
My last one is that with this loss of revenue, I'll call it, for 20, well, today, going forward with COVID, with the number of people that haven't paid, can we expect this to continue? Thank you.
And Mr. Foss, please.
And through you, Warden. Yes, we have not, we have not actioned all of those former charges. The decision by the Crown Attorney's Office, the direction provided, was to stay or withdraw all charges up to December the 21st of 2021. And of course, there's a reference here to Section 11B Charter Challenges. And so it could very well be that this proposed 18-month window does come before us again, so there could be future charges that are also stated or withdrawn, in addition to the ones that are reported in this, in this document.
Thank you. And to offer some reassurance, buried in the middle of this is a, is a statement, if the charge resulted in death or personal injury, or if there was evidence of recidivism, the matter would proceed. So, you know, that was part of their criteria to decide what, what to, what to drop and move along. So I think, you know, that should offer us some comfort, and I was glad to see that they had, had made some distinctions. Thank you. Anything else on item four? We'll move to item five. Item six, we had a very lengthy discussion, you'll see the, some of the content from that at the bottom of page 198. Item number seven, delegation of authority, which is a fairly standard process in, in June for us. And we'll move to item number eight. And councillor, member from Abbott's New Bromley, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Warden, and through you to council, predating on the discussion vis-à-vis Foymount Road and the implications for the long-term financial plan. Very pleased, as I indicated this morning, I think that continuously we have had clean audit reports, that is a testament to the Finance Department managing this very complex corporation. The only thing I just wanted to bring to council's attention, Mr. Chair, can be found on page 237 of today's PDF report. It is Note 10 with respect to reserves at year-end 2022. You will note that the reserve balance is $52,117,555. It is slightly reduced from, of course, the year-end reserve balance at the end of 2021. What I do wish to bring to council's attention, and I think that this is apropos, once again, of the discussion at Budget Workshop this year, when the 2022 budget was approved in January of 2022, the estimate then for the year-end capital reserve balance was $34.8 I just want to let that sink in. So the forecast, when we adopted the 22 budget, was that we were going to have a, just under $35 million in capital reserves. We have $52 million in capital reserves. I think that that's important to carry forward, as we are giving consideration towards impacts to our long-term financial plan, et cetera. It is apropos of nothing that is before us today, but since the audited financial statements are presented today, I think that that is, is worth bringing to council's attention. It is one of the factors, one of those things that we keep in the discussion moving towards forwards. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think if I remember correctly, we've committed to meeting on asset management and financial, long-term financial plan as a separate date in October or November prior to getting into significant budget discussion, so, thank you. Just to remind council of that. And with that, we'll move to item number nine. The report as a whole. The report as a whole, and could I have a mover, please?
So moved, Warden.
Thank you, you've heard the report, the discussion, the questions, and some of the answers. And with that, I'm going to call a vote, all those in favor? Opposed, none, it's carried, thank you very much. And we'll move to item number, page over, item number 13, which is bylaws, or sorry, item number, yeah, item number 13. So with that, I have a motion in front of me, that bylaws listed on item 13 and attached hereto as Schedule A on the County Council agenda dated June 28, 2023, be deemed read three times and passed. So if I could have a mover, please? Member from Amisne Bromley, seconded, member from Bonshire Valley, discussion, is there anybody wishes to have any one of these removed and voted on separately? Thank you, not seeing that, I would call a vote, all those in favor? Opposed, none, it's carried, thank you very much. And with that, we'll move quickly to item number, let's see, keeps it, there it is, somebody keeps moving my agenda, I don't know who he is, but I got it right here, I keep flipping it over. And so with that, item number 14, so there is, as I mentioned, I was waiting for some information from the folks who had attended the AMO board meeting. Chalk River Stewardship Council, please, is there a report?
Thank you, Warden. On 22 June, along with Counselor Giardini, I attended the CNL Environmental Stewardship Council number 51, which was held at the Chalk River site, minutes of the 30 March 2023, and the handouts of the eight seminars are available. The highlights included, CNL is transforming from a national icon into a campus for nuclear science. CNL now employs 4,000 staff, with 400 being hired last year mostly in the environmental field. There are six memo of understandings with universities across Canada for students to be part of nuclear research, including McMaster, Western Ontario Tech, Ottawa, New Brunswick, and Waterloo. The Science Collaboration Centre is scheduled to be open in the fall of 2023. With global first power coming on site, there is a requirement for more parking and discussions with CFP Pedoava to be taking place. Two more buildings have been demolished since our last report. Tomlinson is the company responsible for the collection and refurbishing of the materials from CNL. The CNL forestry unit only responsible for forest management, but also animals that live in the forest, the hooded bat, bardo, bears, moose, deer, beaver, et cetera. And the latest ISO 14001 audit found two minor non-conformance violations that dealt with signage not being correct, and an oil-water separator not available at the fuel dispenser. Corrective plans are being initiated. And lastly, members of the Council were taken on a walking tour of the red pine stand that was an experiment 70 years ago. Lesson learned was, the closer the red pine tree is to each other, the less time they live. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. Questions? Seeing none, we'll move to Eastern Ontario Regional Network, please.
Thank you, Warden. Since you all have my very brief written report, I will say that we did do some stuff enclosed at this meeting. These are the highlights. Apparently, we can, we continue to see positive progress on the number of sites being released to Rogers for construction. We will have a concrete schedule that we can give you soon, hopefully. The Board and Staff also continue to support EOWC's 7 and 7. We believe that we have a lot to offer the Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus, and we're just waiting for the business plan development. We had MP Day on May 29th, and MP Cheryl Gallant did participate, we sent her a thank you note. It was in order to brief the MPs in Eastern Ontario on the progress and the go-forward. Thank you, Warden.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Seeing none, we'll move forward to Federation of Canadian Municipalities.
Nothing to report.
Thank you, and we'll move to Rural Ontario Municipal Association, please.
Thank you, Warden. Again, you've got my written report, the Roma Board met in Prince Edward County. This was the first time since the Roma Conference that we were in person, most of us together, so it was very interesting to get to know the other zone reps, and, you know, the issues that they're facing in their zones, and similarities in Renfrew County and beyond in Zone Six. You got my slide deck for the Prince Edward County Affordable Housing Corporation, I know I've already spoken to a couple of you about it, so I know that there are going to be a couple of questions. We did have a presentation by Thrive, Prince Edward County, about their community and economic development. It was very interesting because in Bonnershire Valley and North Agona Wilberforce, we have the Eganville and Area Community Development Group, and it was very interesting to see the similarities between those two groups. And we toured Base 31, it's a decommissioned air training base, it was very interesting, they have a beautiful art gallery already in use. The concert space was being used for Sam Roberts, I believe, that coming Saturday, and the windows weren't even in the building, it looked like a beehive of activity with all the construction workers all over the site, it was incredible to watch. And they have, they now have an event space, if anybody is ever looking to host something in Prince Edward County, it is the most pretty event space, all in white, perfect for those, you know, if you want to re-up your marital vows. Anyway, we were very impressed. AMO Conference is around the corner, and Roma is going to host a boot, there might even be mints, who knows? Thank you, Warden.
Thank you, thank you very much. Comments, questions, concerns? Counselor from Whitewater Region, please.
Thank you, Warden. I just was really intrigued by the Prince Edward County Affordable Housing Corporation. And when I looked at some of their numbers and the process that they took to get where they are now, I see the potential for something like this happening in Renfrew County. I take a look at, reference our 2019 County of Renfrew, A Place to Call Home, our home, Housing and Homelessness Plan, our 2020 County of Renfrew Seniors Housing Strategy Report, and I look at, how do we execute or deliver on some of the recommendations or strategies that were outlined in those two reports? This might be that. And what I'd like to do is see what procedure the county might require for us to examine this as a possible, possible, possible for implementation here in Renfrew County. If that's a motion required today, then I would, I would make that.
Mr. Kelly, can I get some advice, please?
I sense that's a notice of motion, that you'll bring something back next time.
Thank you. And a member from Bonshire Valley, please.
Thank you, Warden, if I may respond to my colleague. We did have this discussion at the Roma meeting, the challenge that some of the zone reps have that we have here, that Prince Edward County doesn't have, they are one tier. So even though the Mayor of Prince Edward County is the mayor, not of the county, he sits on the Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus, the challenge we will have is that our local tier and county tier, so I just, I don't, I've been trying to think since that meeting, what does that framework look like? And I see Craig's nodding at me because it's, it makes it a bit, there's more of a challenge than just one tier and the way they put it together, but I'd love to know how we can make that work. And when the member from Whitewater brings it forward, I will definitely second it because it is something that was so interesting, and that's why I thought everybody should see it in their package, not just a report from me. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Seeing no further questions and comments, we'll move forward. Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor, a member from Deep River.
Sorry, I did have one thing to say. I have applied for appointments to FCM Board Committees, and I'm just waiting to hear back.
Great, thank you, we appreciate that, and we appreciate the work that you do for us at FCM. I certainly look for your picture, or your, whenever you, whenever the caucuses meet to make sure you're there, so great, thank you. I don't know, it's just something you have to do. And I tweet, I say, hey, there's our guy, Glenn. So with that, like to move forward to the, there's a motion from the member from Township Greater Madawaska, and then seconded by the member from North Agona Wilberforce, that pursuant to Section 117.1 of the County of Renfrew Procedure by law 85-10, as amended that Counselor Lynch and Counselor Riffey be appointed Deputy Wardens from July 1, 2023, and ending on December 12, 2023, the inaugural meeting of Council. And so just a brief overview, I've asked for this to be placed on the, on the agenda. Increasingly, I'm getting invitations that are often at extremes of the county, and I'm racing into events and not staying long enough, and, because increasingly, people want to see the Warden and hear what we're doing, they also know I'm Chair of the Wardens Caucus and have some other responsibilities through Roma and AMO, and so there is a lot of, they really want to have a conversation, and I'm only able to drop in sometimes for an hour because I'm going somewhere else. And so you try to accommodate people, but I don't think it's fair nor right, and I think part of what we wanted to do as well was to, was to increase our visibility across, across the, across the county and in various community events. And so the object is, the Deputy Warden is this ceremonial function, so that does not impact the floor here, should I be absent, you'd still go through the process of nominating someone from the floor. These two positions are to allow us to get to more events, present more plaques and scrolls, and then also bring greetings, and sometimes we, you know, I intersperse in my remarks, and I'm sure my two friends would, remarks about, about the community that we're entering, or trends, or things that we hope they'll pay attention to. So it's, it's a matter, it's a, it's a means of trying to gain more exposure for the corporation, and also to ensure that we meet the demands of, of the community. So, thank you, I hope you can consider this motion. Are there any comments or questions? Seeing none, I, oh, I'm sorry, the Counselor from Bonshire Valley?
I'm sure Counselor Lynch would agree, thank you for this honor, Warden, and if voted, we will do you proud. Thanks.
Thank you. And so with that, all those in favor? Opposed, none, it's carried, and I'll assure you that one of our things that we've talked about is when we are coming into your committee, we will notify you and ask you to accompany us if you're, if you're able to, because we will be dependent upon you to open doors that we might not get, get to at the same time, so thank you. We will move to, I'll read the motion, the resolution, and then ask for a mover and seconder. So whereas rural areas of Ontario, including the County of Renfrew, are not immune to experiencing the effects of the housing and homelessness crisis undermining a healthy and prosperous Ontario, whereas the housing and homelessness crisis requires a range of solutions, including social supports, investment in housing infrastructure, and renewal of existing community housing infrastructure. And whereas the housing and homelessness crisis is a result of limited action from successive provincial governments who have not invested nearly enough to renew and build the housing and social services, infrastructure, and programs required to support those in need. Whereas the local government responsible for community housing in our region, the County of Renfrew, and the City of Pembroke, who formed the Renfrew County Housing Corporation, have increasingly limited resources to tackle the burden of renewing and aged housing stock and increasingly challenging occupancy issues. And whereas the funding of the problems of Ontario and the government of Ontario does not allow for long-term financial planning and asset renewal, nor does it appropriately fund or allow for planning of new construction. Whereas there are currently 1,355 people on the waitlist for a place to call home within the Renfrew County Housing Corporation, with an average of five-to-seven-year wait. And whereas the County of Renfrew supports and endorses the Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus' plan to increase housing supplies through their regional housing plan referred to as 7 and 7, therefore be resolved the County of Renfrew endorses the Association of Municipalities of Ontario, AMO, call to action on housing and homelessness, therefore be resolved the County of Renfrew endorses the Federation of Northern Ontario Municipalities' Phonam Resolution on Increased Funding for Housing from the Federal Government, therefore be resolved that the County of Renfrew calls upon the problems of Ontario, A, to acknowledge homelessness and housing affordability in Ontario as a social, economic, and health crisis, B, to commit to ending homelessness in Ontario, C, to provide adequate, predictable, sustainable housing infrastructure renewal funding. Therefore be it resolved that the County of Renfrew calls upon the Government of Canada and Province of Ontario to ensure that application-based funding that is made available to address the province's housing supply action plan and Canada's national housing strategy is applicable to local governments, partnerships, and nonprofits, and provides the necessary application time period to allow for appropriate community consultation and engagement. Further be resolved that a copy of this resolution be sent to the right Honorable Justin Trudell, Prime Minister of Canada, the Honorable Ahmed Hussain, Minister of Housing, Diversity, and Inclusion, the Honorable Doug Ford, Premier of Ontario, Honorable Steve Clark, Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, Cheryl Gallant, MP, Renfrew, Nippon's Pembroke, John Yakubowski, MPP, Renfrew, Nippon's Pembroke, the Association of Municipalities of Ontario, the Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus, the City of Pembroke, and all Renfrew County municipalities. And you see the background information, so could I have a mover, please? Moved by the member from North Agona Wilberforce, seconded by the member from Brunel and Doc Reglin. And so with that, could I have, are there any comments or discussions on this? This is a resolution that we tried to put together that identified what we see as the obstacles to moving forward, and then at the same time, it combines some really good points from, from 7 and 7, from AMO's work, and then also Phonam, and you see the attached document from Phonam. So with that, I'll call a vote, all those in favor? Opposed, none, it's carried, thank you very much, and thank you to staff for taking my files and notes and murmurings and putting together an excellent resolution. And next, we have a notice of motion, which is resolution number HCC23-0663. It's moved by the Chair and seconded by committee, so whereas the use of opioid drugs has reached a crisis in Ontario, and whereas the Ontario Health Insurance Plan, which is known as OHIP, is proposing to reduce coverage for several vital healthcare services, including a drastic reduction in the number and frequency of nerve block injections a patient can receive, and whereas this change will force many patients looking for pain relief to turn to overcrowded emergency rooms, opioid prescriptions from doctors, or opioid street drugs. Therefore, the County of Renfrew supports the National Chronic Pain Society, and its request that the Government of Ontario maintain OHIP coverage for chronic pain treatments, and continue to provide much-needed care for the people of Ontario. So with that, I'm open to comment and questions, and I believe the member from Amisne Bromley was first.
Thank you very much, Mr. Warden. So, it is somewhat atypical how this is coming forward, and I know that the Clerk's office struggled with this, there was a very engaged discussion at the Health Committee. This was initially presented as an information item, there was an intent to bring this forward, the specific wording was not arrived at at the Health Committee. Subsequently, that's why it is now appearing as a notice of motion, and yet is also reflected as coming forward through the Health Committee. So this is, Mr. Chair, just to be, to be clear, this is now moved and seconded, it is on the table?
Oh, I'm sorry, is, can I get some advice? Because it did say by committee and Chair, Chair and Committee. It shouldn't have said that?
It should not.
Okay, so it's not, so I would be seeking a mover or, and seconder, so if you want to tailor your, so we'll strike that from the record that it was moved and seconded, so that may change your, your dialogue with us.
It may, and I would kindly invite all of Council just to disregard all of my comments preceding this part. I will await, actually, I think that it is because the intent was there at the Health Committee, I will move that, this, move this resolution. Mr. Chair?
Thank you, and is there a seconder in the House? And we'll go, sorry, with the Counselor from Whitewater, and then comments, and then member from Amisne Bromley.
Thank you very much, once again, Mr. Chair. And it was, and I believe that it is in our interest, certainly it was the will of the Health Committee that this come forward and that correspondence be set. There was an engaged discussion at the Health Committee that the information was fairly sparse, and the challenge for, certainly Health Committee or any committee or council for that matter, the County of Renfrew, this is outside of our purview, generally outside of our purview, and our expertise here is limited. That was part of the discussion, and staff were requested to gather more information. The additional information has been provided, that staff had the time to do, and do keep in mind the time constraints, that this council report was only brought, was sent out, distributed to all of Council last Friday, the Health Committee was only the Wednesday preceding. So there was a very limited time
So there was a very limited time constraint on the availability. Subsequent to that, Mr. Chair, on my own initiative, I researched this because I had some vague familiarity with it. So earlier this morning at the Health Committee, there was a discussion about the looming negotiations between the Ontario Medical Association and the Province of Ontario. That was, there was irritation, perhaps even acrimony, at the end of the WIN provincial government, and initially with the Ford provincial government. Over time, there was a deal reached with the OMA and the Province of Ontario to update the fees that were charged for health services. What came out, one of the things that did come out of that agreement, was that there would be, in collaboration with the Ontario Medical Association, an in-depth review of the services that were provided, that were listed, if you will. And several were brought forward in 2019 as recommendations to be delisting or substantially reduced. The nerve block was one of them. In the end, in 2019, from the final list, it was removed. So that was my starting point of searching whether that had been revived. And in Googling that, there is nothing recent in the press. I do know that there is that four-year-old discussion. What I do know moving forward, and I can advise council, is that the Ontario Medical Association itself has multiple units within it, representative of different practices, et cetera. And there is a pain group that is certainly advocating the position that is held here. But it is a very robust, shall we say, engagement with the Ontario Medical Association. And I think that, in my estimation, my recommendation would be that we not take a position at this point. If we are to believe, and I do so believe, that the Ontario Medical Association is much better placed to make decisions with respect to the appropriateness of listed items that the Ontario Health Insurance Plan would pay for, would not pay for, that it would be premature at this point for the council of the County of Renfrew to take a position, given that the expertise have not yet arrived at a final position. So that this is, and the reason that I moved this, as opposed to letting it die on the order paper, was that I think it was important to have this conversation. But I would like to move, Mr. Chair, that this be referred back to Health Committee, and that staff be directed to monitor and gather further information. And at some point, when there is more clarity surrounding this situation that is arrived at by the adjudicative body that is tasked with this very thing, that this would come back to the Health Committee.
Thank you. Can I get a second for that motion? And it'll be the member from Deep River, please. And so the motion is that it returns to Health Committee for further review. Any discussion or comment? And I do apologize, I was part of the haste in getting this forward. Again, with the AML Conference in August in my sights, should this have exploded onto the provincial scene after our meeting and not having a meeting in July? So I apologize for not thinking it through. So thank you very much for the excellent suggestion to review it again. Not seeing any further conversation, I will ask for the vote. All those in favour? Opposed, none, it's carried. Thank you very much. Members of written motions? Seeing none? New business? Lots of new business? Okay, we'll start with a member from Deep River and work our way around the table.
So I just wondered if I could provide some proof that I was at the last FCM meetings and ask Tina to put the proof up on the screen?
All right. Stole the Prime Minister's tie. Good work. Thank you. Yeah, that guy with Glenn Downcaster? Thank you. And so with that, I believe I saw Whitewater's hand? Did I see Whitewater? I saw Bontravally, and then Greater Matawaska, and then Petawawa.
Okay, so I apologize, I didn't get you a proper poster for this Canada Day, but this is all the stuff going on in Bonnershire Valley on Canada Day. And we do have a Shania Twain tribute artist, if anybody is into Shania. Oh, Fosse's like, yeah. Apparently she is very good, but these are all the events. And I have convinced the warden to come and help me out with judging Bonnershire Valley's Got Talent, which should be pretty darn funny. So if you're in the area, please drop by. Thank you.
I thought it was a pie eating contest. So, thank you. We'll move to Township Greater Matawaska, please.
Thank you. And just to let you know, we're having an event in Calabogie, too, but we don't have a Shania Twain look-alike. But we do have, we did have a visitor on Friday, June 23rd, at our Calabogie Fire Department. As you're all aware, we recently had a major fire event in Greater Matawaska, and it not only made local news, national news, but international news. And on Friday, June 23rd, Lord Prior Mark Compton of the Order of St. John arrived in Calabogie. And he met with all our firefighters and presented them with St. John Ambulance Canada Life Saving Awards. He also presented a plaque to the Greater Matawaska Fire Department from the Royal Order of St. John for life-saving. He was in Burnaby, BC, and then heading to Ottawa for other events, and heard about our fire, and saw what had happened, and attended. So he, the Royal Order of St. John, basically, you have Lord Prior from Australia, he answers directly to the King. And that's, so we had him in Calabogie. So kind of put us on the map.
Great, thank you very much. And congratulations to your Fire Department and your community for having such an honour, and as such an established visitor. With that, the member from Petawawa, please.
Thank you, Warden. Through you, and I apologize, I know we've been here a long time, but we don't meet again till August, and I just wanted to say thanks. On behalf of Garrison Petawawa and the town of Petawawa, thank you to everybody in our community who provided support and assistance during last week's tragic accident on Garrison Petawawa. And I'll start by thanking you, Warden, and everybody in this room today for honoring Captain Mark LaRouche and Captain David Domagala during our moment of silence here at our meeting. I know that will be much appreciated by the families and all of the members of 450 Squadron. Thanks again to everybody in our community who responded to the incident, the Garrison Fire Department, Petawawa Fire Department, our Renfrew County paramedics, the OPP members, and especially their dive team, CNL, who showed up very early with booms and other environmental equipment to help mitigate what could have been a bit of an environmental disaster, Aqua, who quickly turned off our intake pipe, which is in the river close to the crash site, City of Pembroke, who provided us with clean water because our pipe was turned off through our shared system, and to the City of Pembroke and Laurentian Valley for supporting us in our nonessential watering ban throughout that whole incident. And to all the members of Garrison Petawawa and our community Petawawa for all the support and assistance that was provided. Thank you to everybody.
Thank you very much. It's quite a, and this is a terrible word to use with quite a story, you know, in terms of how the community comes together all the time, and especially in this instance. And you can be assured, we're guided in doing the right thing because the military does such a great job at doing the right thing. And we will always follow their example. So thank you. And then councillor from North Agona and Wilberforce.
Just wanted to invite anybody who might be free on Canada Day, that we are having a breakfast as well, and we have the Leahy family entertaining. So you can do the Leahys and Shania Twain later on in the afternoon in Eaganville.
All right, some Canadianna. Thank you. And did I see anybody else? So I will see councillor, or a member from Armpire, and then the CAO.
We're doing something in July 1st, 2nd, July 1st, and we have multiple talent, all local. But more importantly, on the 26th of August, which is way down the road, circle your calendar for the cultural night in Armpire, which has put us on the map. Thank you.
Thank you. Some Armpire culture. What more could you ask for? Thank you. And so with that, the CAO, please.
I'm having a family barbecue. No, I'm kidding.
All right.
Someone had to say it, someone had to say it.
Sponsored by Steam Whistle.
That's right. A piece of seriousness, thank you to councillor service. We actually have just received word from Canadian Heritage, the flags are being lowered for the days of the funeral services for the two captains, so we will honor that as well, and have asked the property staff lower our flags on those two days as well. So of note. And you've received now on your desk two items of information. One is the Warden's Golf Tournament is back after several years on hiatus. So Thursday, September 21st is a day to sign up your clubs and donate some money to the two items that the Warden has asked that the monies go towards this year. And one is the Ontario Winter Games Legacy Fund, and the other is to our Housing and Homelessness Fund. So we'll put all proceeds towards that. I know our group that has been assigned this task is out of soliciting sponsors and participants. So that goes live next week. We're just having some issues with our online payment, so that's that. The other item is actually a revision to what we told you we were going to do a few months ago. We heard you and have spoken about our staff dinner, our staff service awards dinner. We thought that was, it's had, it's had, we're not doing it anymore. It's had its date. We thought it was a little more stiff than we thought the county is, and so we're going to have some fun. We've reached out to Festival Hall, and we're going to open up the doors that night to all of our staff that are being appreciated through their service of their milestone service awards, their retirements. And we're hoping to invite those retirees that have not been able to have a dinner or retirement service over the last few years back to this event. And then we'll open it up to other staff and their guests. So this is going to happen on November 30th, with a bunch of comedians and a bunch of, some fun music to be had. So hopefully you can join us and keep that date open as well. So those are your two items of business, Warden, and thank you. And have a great summer, everyone.
Thank you. And with that, I will move to the confirmatory bylaw. That a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the council of the County of Renfrew at the meeting held on June 28th be now numbered, deemed read three times and passed. It is bylaw number 104-23. I hope we made that sound interesting. So moved by the member from Petawawa, seconded by the member from Kildu Hagerty Richards. All those in favour? Opposed, none, it's carried. Thank you very much in all seriousness today to staff and council. June is a busy month for us, and I appreciate your patience and grace as we've wrapped up as much business as we have today. It's very impressive as well. Always appreciate your insight. So thank you very much. Have a safe summer. We'll see you at the start of the second week of August for committee, and then back to AML, and then of course, back here at the end of the month for county council. And with that, I'd seek a motion to adjourn, please. Councillor Amson Bromley, councillor Bontravally. All those in favour? Opposed, none, it's carried. Thank you.